Please be seated. I can see many members have already taken their jackets off. For those who haven't, feel free to do so. Good morning, everyone. Before I ask my chaplain, Father Graham Bott, to lead us in prayer, I would like to remind members that this meeting will be live webcast and available for public viewing for 12 months, and archived thereafter. With regard to use of microphones in the chamber, when a member wishes to speak, please press the button on the base of your microphone. A green light will illuminate and your name will appear on the screen in front of me. I will decide on the order in which I wish members to speak. And when I call your name, the operator in front of me will activate your microphone. Please do not press the button again, as this will turn off your microphone. Your microphone is operational when the red light shows on the top of the microphone. When you have finished speaking, it would be helpful if you could press the button on the brass plate to turn off your microphone. I now call on Father Graham Bott.
Thank you, Chairman. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Father in heaven, we pray that your grace may be in our hearts and your wisdom in our minds, so that all we do may be guided by you, that we may always have the concerns and the good of others at the centre of all we seek to do, in Jesus' name, amen. Father, we continue to hold before you those who are affected by the pandemic, for all those for whom life is restricted because of illness, for those who are recovering as a result of contracting the virus, for those whose livelihoods have been affected by the inability to work in the normal way. And we pray that through your healing spirit, they may be supported, comforted, and sustained, as this, in the name of Jesus the Lord, amen. O God, Creator and ruler of all, we ask your blessing on the members of this county council who have been called to show care and responsibility in the community. We pray that we may have wisdom and patience and the ability to listen to each other and to the needs and desires of those whom we represent, that through our dedication and hard work, this council may duly prosper and the life of all people in this county enhance. We make this prayer in Jesus' name, amen. I invite you, if you wish to join with me in the saying the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
In order to minimise aerosol effusion during speeches, I move a standing order 1421 relating to requirement for members to stand when speaking be suspended for this meeting, and that members should remain seated. Is that a read? Are there any apologies for absence? Mr Chairman, we've received apologies in addition to them from Councillor Crurridge, from Philip Atkins, John Francis, Saad Hussain, Robert Pritchard, James Salisbury, Janice Sylvester Hall, Bob Spencer, Philip White, Connor Wilmun, and Ian Wilkes. Thank you. Declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest? And Q. Confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting. I move that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 20th of May 2021 be signed as a true record. I will take it that the minutes are agreed unless members indicate to the contrary. Councillor Hockenfield.
Yeah, can I just ask a question? Right, I understand that the leader of the council, Alan White, wrote to Red Industries, considering the landfills.
No, I can't tell you that. This is just purely when the minutes have been authorised, whether you have anything against the minutes, not any matters arising. I'm sorry.
Can I just say, Mr Chairman, it was just a question to ask, if he'd received a reply.
We can speak outside the meeting about that.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Chairman's correspondence. Staffordshire residents recognised in Queen's Birthday honours. I'm sure that members will wish to join me in extending the council's congratulations to the following Staffordshire residents who have been honoured in Her Majesty's Queen's Birthday honours, and I'm pleased to say it's quite a long list. CBE for Amanda Penelope Sunderland of Burton, formerly Chief Nurse of Nottingham University Hospitals NHS Trust for Services to Nursing. OBE for Margaret Isabel Bernadette Kincaid of Stafford, Tax Specialist for HM Renewal and Customs for Services for Taxation of the Oil Industry. OBE for Jane Low of Caverswall, Managing Director and Education Advisor of Bright Green Learning for Services to Education. MBE for Dr John Alexander of Lagerheads, Consultant in Pediatric Intensive Care at UNNM NHS Trust for Services to Critically Ill Children and Young People. MBE for Corinne Bowden of Stoke-on-Trent for Services for Community in Stoke-on-Trent, particularly during Covid-19. MBE for Barry Michael Bond of Wombourn, Chair of Governors of Green Park School in Wolverhampton for Services to Education. MBE for Julia Catherine Bridgewater of Newcastle Underlime, Group Chief Operating Officer at Manchester University NHS Foundation Trust for Services to the NHS, particularly during Covid-19. MBE for Zoe Adele Clark Coates of Tamworth, Founder of the Mary Poser Trust for Services for Baby-Lost Community and the Improvement of Bereavement Care. MBE for Neil Anthony Dawson of Stoke-on-Trent for Services for Community of Stoke-on-Trent. MBE for Ada Horton of Stoke-on-Trent, Housing Support Administrator at YMCA North Staffordshire for Services for Remembering of Strebenika. MBE for Eric Horabin of Tamworth, Member and Poppy Appeal Collector for the Tamworth branch of the Royal British Legion for Services for the Ex-Services Community. MBE for Carl Humphries of Newcastle Underline of Get Hooked on Fishing for Services to Education. MBE for Tracy Maria Johnson of Stoke-on-Trent, Formerly HR Director at Leake United Building Society for Services of Financial Services during Covid-19. MBE for Josephus Josie Hannah Morris of Stoke-on-Trent, Manager Director of Woolpool for Services of Manufacturing and the Environment. MBE for Ian Andrew Noons of Yarnfield, Custodial Manager at HM Young Offenders Institute Drakal for Services to HM Prison and Probation Services. MBE for Alan Person of Hensford, Head Teacher of New Invention Junior School Walsall for Services to Education. MBE for Siobhan Riley of Bishop's Offaly, Regional Chief Nurse Midlands and East NHS England and NHS Improvement for Services to Nursing and the Covid-19 Response. MBE for Rebecca Rollison of Chesley Hay, Resourcing Manager for the Vaccines Task Force and Department for Business, Energy and Industrial Strategy for Services for Government during the Covid-19 Response. MBE for Clifford John Thornton Stott of Kiel, Professor of Social Psychology at Kiel University for Services to Crowd Psychology and the Covid-19 Response. MBE for former councillor Lee Bates of Tamworth for Services for the Community in Tamworth and Covid-19 Response Project. BM for councillor Paul Brynley of Tamworth for Services for Community in Tamworth and Covid-19 Response Projects. BM for Hannah Finley of Bidolf, Frontline Food Retail Worker for the Cooperative Group for Services to the Food Supply Chain. BM for Janet Whoos of NOSUL for Services for Community at NOSUL. And I'm sure you'd like to join in me in thanking all those people for the great service they've done for our community many over many years. The Tokyo Olympics. After a month dominated by sport, I'm sure the whole council will join me in wishing the best of luck for all the Staffordshire competitors taking part in the Tokyo Olympics, which gets underway tomorrow, and the Paralympics next month. First to go for gold at the weekend will be swimming superstar Adam Peaty, who will be the first British swimmer to defend his Olympic title. If he wins gold again, the GB team, which will also include Burton boxer Fraser Clark, stone canoeist Adam Burgess, and portiller triple jumper Ben Williams. So good luck to them all. And again, I'm sure we as a council wish our local participants good luck in what's happening in Tokyo. Statement to the Lead of the Council. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration of a statement, please?
Thank you, Chairman, I move consideration of the Leader's statement.
Is there anybody to second it? Okay, no, thank you. I then call on anyone who would like to go through the items. We'll go through the items in number order. And please indicate by, you wish to speak by pressing the button on your microphone. Okay. Update from Covid-19 Members Led Local Outbreak Council Board. There are two items on the Leader's statement about Covid. I would like to try and take as many at the first item, item number one, and then we'll use item number six as a wash-up for anything that may have been missed or anything that comes back to members' minds while we're discussing other matters. So item number one, update from Covid-19 Members Led Outbreak Control Board. Councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I just wonder whether we had any information on how we were faring as far as the take-up was concerned by 18-year-olds and over. I understand across the country that there's a degree of reluctance to take the vaccination in younger people, and I wonder whether that was reflected in the county. I wonder whether we had any information on that. And I suppose I would also be interested to know whether we have many people in hospital at the moment suffering from Covid. If we had any information, it would be interesting to know. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Smith. Councillor Jeremy Pert. Jeremy, before I take you, can I please take councillor Johnny McMahon, the Cabinet member? Can you switch it?
Ah, that's better, thank you. In response to councillor Smith's question, I'll take that first and then say a few words if I may. In Staffordshire, we have 40% of those who are 18 to 29 currently fully vaccinated and north of 60% who have had at least one dose. It is the case that it's a bit slower than previous cohorts, but I think we're reaching the stage now where the elderly and the vulnerable got it to save their lives and the young get it to get their lives back. If you think of the travel restrictions that might be imposed on people without being properly vaccinated, going to nightclubs and stuff like that, I'm confident that we will get there. It's also the case that we can use what we did for those who are reticent, and that was get people they trust to speak to them, like their GP, like in the Muslim community, the leaders in the Muslim community in Burton. And that is working. And I think we can do the same for those youngsters who are somewhat resistant. But I'm confident that we'll get there. In terms of those in the hospital, I'm unhappy to give you a number because numbers always change in this piece because it's so quick. But what I can say is a fraction of what it was before in the light of the numbers that we're seeing in the community. It's making a big difference. And Covid, the vaccine reduces your risk of getting Covid. It reduces your risk of being contagious if you do get it. It reduces your risk of being seriously ill with it and being hospitalized, as we have seen. And we also think that there's some evidence that it reduces the risk of long Covid as defined by disabling symptoms at three months. So the answer is get the vaccine. Thank you. If I may, Chair, the Local Outbreak Control Board currently meets fortnightly. It consists of representation from all the district and boroughs. It's chaired by our leader Alan White, and I chair it in his absence. There are senior officers present. We get a full assessment update, and then we look at issues like comms, enforcement and compliance, and particular local issues. This is fed by the Local Outbreak Control Groups, which meet in the district and boroughs on a regular basis. And it's a system that works well. It means we can work at pace whilst at the same time having local political buy-in, which is essential. And working at pace is absolutely critical for this. And this system works well for us. And I'm grateful for all those who take the time and effort, both within the county and in the county council, the districts and boroughs, and out with, to join us in these things. It is the case that the numbers are going up nationally and in the UK, in both Staffordshire and the UK. But the rates per 100,000 are broadly speaking similar. We're on par with the rest of the country. We have had recent outbreaks in Newcastle and Leake, which we've managed to get on top of. And we do have an outbreak in Tamworth that is currently a challenge. But it's the same, we're using the same system as we've used before, a very strong comms piece, test, trace, and isolate, and a surge vaccination programme. And with the goodwill of the people of Staffordshire and the common sense of the people of Staffordshire, we beat it. And every confidence will do the same again in Tamworth. And as a case in point, today there is a joint vaccination and testing site at the Ventura Retail Park, as there was on Tuesday of this week in Tamworth. That's the sort of thing we're doing in order to get across the line. Hospitalizations are a fraction of what they were before, as I've outlined to councillor Smith. As I've outlined as well, the vaccination doesn't completely break the chain such that you end up in hospital, but it gives it a bloody nose. There's little doubt about that. The numbers are considerably less who become severely ill with this. The vaccine, I think the elderly, it was a question of I want it to save my life. And in the youngsters, as I said, it's to get their lives back. And I'm sure that we will get there in the long run. What do we do as a county council? We do a rigorous test and trace programme. We manage outbreaks as described. We have a robust and continuous comms piece, and we support the vulnerable. And these pieces of work, that infrastructure, will remain in place at least as long as this financial year, and then we will reconsider it. What can I say to those about what you would advise people? The first thing is get the vaccine. The second thing is show respect to others. We don't know how vulnerable they are and how vulnerable they feel. And finally, I just want to say thank you to the NHS, which on the 73rd birthday this year got the St George's Cross. There's only been two previous occasions when the St George's Cross has been given corporately. That was to Malta in 1942 and the Royal altar constabulary in 1999. And it's well deserved. People go out of their, thousands of people in the NHS go out of their way every day.
Can I give you final 20 seconds to wind up? I know it's such an important subject, Covid, that's why I've allowed you to overrun.
Thank you. Get the vaccine, encourage everybody else to get the vaccine, and show respect to others. We don't know if somebody in the supermarket has had severe Covid, has had long Covid, or has had a friend who's died. Show respect and enjoy life. Thank you.
Councillor Jeremy Pert.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning. Chairman, we have all different lived experiences over the last 18 months. But we would not have come back to this chamber today without the incredible efforts and devotion of many people in the NHS, in social care, in key industries across key critical workers. Which is why, as the Cabinet member mentioned, which is why on the 73rd anniversary of the NHS starting Monday, the 5th of July, it was fitting that Her Majesty the Queen awarded the NHS the George Cross on behalf of a grateful nation. The George Cross, as I'm sure you would remind me, was established during World War II as a means of recognising acts of the greatest heroism or of the most courage in circumstances of extreme danger performed by British civilians or military personnel while not in the presence of the enemy. Now, in terms of the last 18 months, I could spend time talking about the success of the vaccine programme in Staffordshire and their mantra of leaving no one behind in getting vaccinated, as the Cabinet members mentioned. In talking, we could talk about the staff dedication to support as many individuals with Covid as possible, or how hospitals and social care together worked to ensure that there were beds available to ensure that the NHS was not overrun during the phases of the pandemic. They have changed and innovated at every turn and every phase of disease to make sure that we were the ones who were the winners. But my question is a simple one to the leader. Will you write to the leaders of the NHS in Staffordshire and congratulate them on the award and add your and our thanks on behalf of Staffordshire residents? Thank you.
Councillor Ashad Absar, please.
Thank you, Chair. Without a question of doubt, this council is playing a critical role in the effective rollout of the Covid-19 mass vaccinations. We want to build on this as we prepare for the future and create strategies for living with Covid-19 in the medium to long terms. We will certainly need to continue with this national effort as well as possibly looking at a third booster mass vaccination programme. We will need to address vaccine hesitancy and guarantee complete take-up by all segments in the population. Councils play an important role in the local communications, planning, and assistance to successfully administer mass vaccinations, especially for populations of BAME communities who have poor confidence in national institutions. Will the leader agree that community involvement is a critical factor in this success of such lifesaving initiatives? And I welcome the opportunity to work with the council and authorities in encouraging these communities to come forward and get vaccinated at their earliest opportunity, if already not done so. Thank you.
Councillor Mrs Gillian Pardaisi.
Pay their bills. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Colin Greatrix.
Thank you, Chairman. If I can just react to that, I think it's ideal to make the most of whatever accolades we get to our NHS. And I want to disassociate that last comment because I think it's very positive that we've had that accolade. I wanted to react to some of the comments that councillor David Smith had made and the response that came from Johnny McMahon, hopefully not prompting another response from him. But I will just react to the young cohort. And I know it's anecdotal, but I have two children who are in their late twenties. And they're not the sort of people that go to nightclubs anymore. They're not the sort of people who, as far as I'm aware, are going to go gallivanting across the world. And they're not very keen on pop concerts. So I've asked them what their friends are doing about getting vaccinated, and they're saying we can't see the point. Now, I know councillor McMahon's just referred to the very positive reasons why young people should get vaccinated, i.e. to save any transmission, to save any long Covid, and also to be respectful to the others who they could infect. But it's going to be more of an uphill struggle. And I'm well aware of the fact that, as councillor McMahon said, initially people were getting vaccinated to save themselves. And there's another obligation that we've got on the younger people to convert them to the way of thinking, that they need to do it for others as well as for themselves. I know it's going to be more of a struggle, and we should all be aware of that.
Councillor Graham Hutton.
Thank you very much. I'd like to congratulate this council for all its work it's done during Covid. It's been incredibly successful. Yesterday, I was in Royal Stoke CCU, that's the Critical Care Unit, on a totally unrelated matter to Covid. And I asked how many people were in CCU with Covid. And the answer was two. There are only two people yesterday in the Critical Care Unit with Covid. And I think that is absolutely amazing. And I really do want to congratulate everybody involved in this council, staff and councillors who have worked so hard to achieve this amazing result, truly astonishing. Thank you.
Councillor Julia Jesel.
Thank you, Chairman. I can't let this particular agenda item go without saying thank you and my heartfelt appreciation for the gentleman sat on my right. Councillor Johnny McMahon has played a superb role over the last 12 months. He's answered questions eloquently, professionally, and in a very informed way. And we have absolute confidence in him and the responses he gave. confidence in him and the responses he gives and the input he's had. It's been a very difficult time for all our staff, but as I say, it would be remiss of me not to express my personal thanks, and I hope it reflects the sentiments of all of us to thank him, as he's trying to ignore me now, sitting on my right hand side. He's very good at ignoring me, he just turns his hearing aids off. In terms of vaccinations, Johnny and myself have had conversations. We're very focused on Covid and have been for a while. But there are other vaccinations that our children should be having from three months old. I know some of those vaccination rates were actually dropping off slightly before Covid. They are dropping off significantly, not least because children have had such an interrupted period of time at school. And I would implore everybody out there to actually ensure that the mumps, measles, rubellas, polio, diptheries, et cetera, et cetera, you get your children vaccinated. We cannot ignore the fact that some of these diseases are killers. I can remember when I was young, I had a friend who had polio who was crippled for life. You never hear of that now, and I never want to hear of that again. So in the broader context, whilst it's not the responsibility of this authority but NHS England, I know councillor McMahon and myself are considering writing to NHS England, because I think it's something we've got to be careful of, is there is life before Covid, during Covid and after Covid. And we mustn't find ourselves in another pandemic caused by the fact that eyes have been taken off the ball. It's very important. And a final plea, and I think councillor Greatrix made a very valid point about young people, is if as a parent, a grandparent, aunt or uncle, you have any influence over these younger people, use that influence now and say, get vaccinated. Thank you.
Councillor Keith Flunder.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone. My comments are slightly personal, so I don't know whether I should have declared an interest. My son did become Covid positive at the beginning of the leak outbreak, and my experience is slightly different from Colin's. His cohort are definitely very much in favour of getting vaccinated. And I'd just like to go over a couple of points about how it's all been responded to, and my own personal experience with Dr Richard Harding and also with Johnny McMern, who personally helped when that outbreak happened, very early stages indeed. The speed of the communications in and around the outbreak in Leake, the speed of the response, the fact that 18-year-olds then could go on to become vaccinated was a very early decision that they made, and I think that was critical, to be able to keep the percentages up across the board. The PCR testing carried on going, and whoever would have realised that car parks would have been so important, particularly some for the Moorlands outbreak and everything else, to JCB, for example, and their support. And it's just unbelievable what resources you need to actually fight this. And you need space, basically. And finding space has been very much supported by many local businesses and everything else. I'll come on to that in a moment. But I do think that it's very important that we get that message out there, we don't put this negative element out there for the younger generation. I think it's very important that we need to keep that positive message out there, keep it going. And the support of businesses, not just with resources such as car parks, but also the fact that they've had specialised vaccination processes. And in my own case, or my family's case, as it were, my son was 17 at the beginning of the outbreak, he turned 18 during the outbreak, he's now been vaccinated at the end of the process, a special outbreak or vaccinations, I don't know, period or location was given to him, and he and his cohort went off and actually got injected from his workplace. So I do think that we need to thank others, businesses as well. And then finally, all the volunteers in and around Bidolf and the other areas, but across the whole county, who have helped within all these different vaccination centres and everything else. I don't know if anyone else mentioned that, but I do think that that's also been extremely important across the whole of the outbreak period and into the future as well. I do think there's a lot more we've got to talk about for the future, and I saw Julia Jessel and Johnny McHern will sort that out. And my last comment is, as a family, isolation. You've got to be able to keep this under control somehow. And isolation, I think, is about the only remaining tool we have now in the box, and that's going to be something that we're going to have to apply ourselves. And I think that's an important message to get out there. If you come across anything else, please don't be a spreader, as we've already mentioned. So once again, thank you very much for everybody, and I'm really glad about the award and everything else. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Mark Taville.
Thank you, Chairman. And I would concur, Chairman, totally with my friend Mrs Jessel around his comments about Mr McMahon, who has shown tremendous leadership, along with Richard Harling. They're parts of a team, Chairman, and that team has fought Covid in its darkest days, going back to sort of last April, last March, when it was pretty dreadful. We fought this virus on a teamwork basis, and your leadership, Johnny, was essential and was very, very much appreciated. Moving forward, Chairman, and well said, Mr Hutton, around that teamwork, the hospital have played a tremendous, tremendous part in the reaction to the virus. But I think moving forward, it's that partnership, Chairman, between county council, district council, the magnificent work that our community groups have done, the magnificent work that's been done in our vaccination centres. That's the way we'll beat this virus. But even more importantly, Chairman, it's not buildings and it's not councillors that'll beat the virus. It's the people. It's the people in general. It's people doing the right things, looking after each other, looking out for each other, showing a tremendous amount of self-responsibility moving forward. That's how we've got thus far with this virus, and that's how we'll actually beat it, Chairman.
Councillor Jill Hood.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask about my division. I don't know what the success rate of the vaccination is with young people, but we have a population of 20,000 people and we have no vaccination centre. Now, travelling eight miles is probably no big deal to us, but to teenagers and young people, that's a heck of an ask. A lot of them don't have transport, and teenagers mostly have got an attitude that they are invincible, so why should they put themselves out? So I would like to ask if we could have a look at having a vaccination centre. When we had the dreadful affair with the greedy landlord who decided to cram over 400 people into his pub, we immediately jumped into action, and by the Monday, we had a testing centre on one of our large car parks. So I can't see why we can't have in Stone a vaccination centre. And I'd like to agree with everything that anyone has spoken on today about the NHS, but in particular, I would like to echo Mr Henderson's comments at our Welcome Day about the fantastic and valiant effort of our volunteers, who I know in my division, just outstanding, running people here, there and everywhere, but somehow I don't think they're going to be running young people. So please, can I ask that we have a vaccination point? Thank you, Chairman.
There we go. Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman, and I welcome many of the comments that have been made across the chamber this morning. I just want to turn to the questions in no particular order. First of all, councillor Pardaisy asked, does the George Cross help the NHS to pay its bills? The George Cross is the highest award for non-operational gallantry that is available to the British government. I've known people who've had awards for gallantry in combat, and what I can tell you is, as they are closing with the enemy, the last thing on their mind is not paying rations, it's doing the right thing for their fellows. And I'm not really, I don't think, and I can't speak for all members of the NHS, I think many members of the NHS just did their duty and did the right thing by their fellow human beings, and that was the reason why the award came around. And to link that with paying the bills for the NHS, I think, is unnecessary and, I have to say, probably unimportant at this point in the phase of the pandemic. Councillor Purt asked us to write to the leaders of the NHS of Staffordshire with our thanks. Of course, councillor Purt, that's a very wise and welcome suggestion, and we will do so, and I will ask councillor Jessel and councillor McMahon to draft the appropriate letter. Councillor Afzal asked about community involvement being vital to the success. Councillor Afzal, you are absolutely right. And if councillor Hussain was here, once again, I would thank him for his tremendous work with communities in East staffs, particularly within his division, which was absolutely tremendous. And we owe him a debt of gratitude for the really, really intense work he did with his friends, family and other residents within his division to make sure that that community work really took hold. I would ask anybody who wants to see a model of great community work, speak to councillor Hussain, he did a great job and is still doing a great job within his division. We, of course, have thanked many people across the NHS during the course of this presentation, but we've also thanked our staff here at Staffordshire County Council. Jointly from myself and Mr Henderson, we sent a thank you card to every single member of staff with some wildflower seeds in it, with a note of thanks for all their efforts during the course of the pandemic. In addition to that, I think, and I'm looking to Mr Henderson for confirmation, we offered them an additional day's holiday on their birthday, which wasn't taken from their holiday allocation. So on your birthday, you get a day's holiday from Staffordshire County Council if you work here, and that's gone down an absolute treat. It isn't the big expensive things that make a difference to people's lives. The thank you cards and the wildflower seeds have gone down really, really well, because it is us, as the councillors, appreciating the work of our officers during the course of the pandemic. To councillor Hood, I've asked councillor McMahon and councillor Jessel to write to Dr Hannigan, because we've got the benefit of WhatsApp, to pick up your point about vaccination centres in Stone. So we hopefully will have an answer to that, and hopefully councillor McMahon and councillor Jessel will get back to you with that in fairly short order. The last time I stood up in this chamber, and any of us stood up in this chamber, was the 19th of March 2020. It's a long time ago, and a lot has happened, and here we are back again. We're back again, but it's not over. And I'd ask everybody who's watching this and in this chamber and representing your communities, remember, it is not over. And councillor McMahon has implored all of us to get round and encourage people to get that vaccine, because this is our way through this. So any vaccine hesitancy, encourage those people to step forward. Where there are gaps, as councillor Hood has indicated, let's fill those gaps and let's move forward together so we can start to rebuild the economy of Staffordshire and we can rebuild our communities and get going again. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Staffordshire Means Back to Business Oral Update. Councillor Mark Wellington.
Thank you, Chairman. It seems really strange sitting down. It's like sort of eating your tea in front of the telly. In terms of, in terms of the report here, Staffordshire Means Back to Business, there's one or two things that concern me and also help a bit with the way I think that we're going as an economy within Staffordshire. The statement is really good, and there's a lot of facts about what's going forwards. It misses out one or two things, or doesn't actually mention them, that young people and women in particular are suffering particularly badly post, as we start to move out of the pandemic. We've got figures in the region of 350,000 19 to 24-year-olds within the country that are going to lose their jobs. So the good thing in this report in particular is that we've got apprenticeship schemes coming forwards, we've got new startups to try and get that economy going, so that's really good. Also, within looking at the economic report for Staffordshire and the UK, GDP has fell 3.7% below the pre-pandemic levels, so we've got to get that back. And the Bank of England expects a GDP of around 5.5% for the last two quarters of this year, and a 3% rise in inflation. Now, anyone who's bought any petrol or anything like that, 3% does seem a little bit on the low side, and I would suspect to be nearer 10% if we're honest about it. So that's quite scary. I've been approached by a lot of businesses who are very concerned, not just about the rising prices, but the lack of resource to run their businesses. Training staff is something they mention. Steel price has gone up 80% in the last month. That's really knocking businesses. You can't get chips for engines, for love of the money, that's not from down the chippy, it's actually the hardware that run these engines and the EPUs. And tyres, strangely, we can understand why people couldn't get, and were hoarding toilet rolls, but tyres. I went for an implement tyre the other day to a local tyre supplier, and he said, we've got five left. And I said, really? He said, yes, five left in the UK. So, and some tyres, people have got on the waiting list till the end of September. So how can you run a business without tyres to actually run them on? I've heard of some of our large manufacturers having to run lines part weeks because they can't get supplies. So it is a real concern now for businesses that prices are going up and they can't actually get the supplies when they want to. So my ask really on this statement is, will Cabinet please lobby MPs, work with businesses themselves, ask them what the problems are? If they go out there and ask businesses, and I know we've got one or two cabinet members who are in business and will appreciate what's going on. It's not good. You've got to speak to these businesses and see what we can do for them. It's not all about that one ship that was stuck in the sewers. Everyone quotes a fact, oh, there's no tyres because the ship was stuck in the sewers, urban myth or what. So it is important that we start to get Staffordshire, and I'm concerned about Staffordshire, back trading at full capacity again. We can't do with this continual rise of costs and reduction in supply of supplies to run our businesses. Thank you.
Councillor Ashad Afzal, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick questions regarding the economic recovery shows an increase of 9% in job vacancy figures. Could I please ask the leader of the council to give us a breakdown of what sectors these vacancies figures refer to? And also may I ask the leader for an approximate uptake figure on the Staffordshire apprenticeship initiative to date, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Philip Hudson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. There's no doubt that the hospitality business within Staffordshire has been badly affected since Covid, and I welcome the government's extending of the pavement licences scheme for another 12 months to help our hospitality sector. This is a very positive way to back our local businesses as they now recover, now that most lockdown restrictions have been relaxed. And I know that some local businesses, too, Utoxeter, and in fact many businesses in the East Staffordshire borough, have taken advantage of this. I wish them well for the future, and it is now down to us as residents to support our local businesses safely and responsibly. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Mike Silverland.
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to be able to comment on this item. It's been great that this council has been so proactive from the start of Covid and kept the focus and support through grants and help for both all businesses, large and small, across the county. And that's been going on consistently for the last 16 months or so. What is beginning to be noticeable is that there's a growing level of confidence across some businesses now. And I would like to make a quick comment on this report and give a couple of examples under paragraph 2.4 covering the economic recovery. One of my examples is JCB, based in Utoxeter. I hear they are reporting a full order book. That's good news indeed. Yes, there are short-term problems that they're struggling with, but they have a full order book. Now, we have many families in Rusely and across Cannockchase who are employed at JCB, so this means much. employed at JCB. So this means much needed job security for our local Cannock Chase area as well. My other example is the recently opened MacArthur Glen Designer Centre in Cannock, which opened at Easter this year. It's MacArthur Glen's seventh centre in the UK and already the Cannock Outlet Centre is trading exceptionally well, well above their expectations. So much so that their investors have authorised that they push ahead now with phase two buildings. This site currently employs around 780 people with around 80% living within local travelling distance. With phase two jobs, they're set to double the amount of jobs. All this means is more jobs now and in the future. If you've not managed to visit this outlet centre, I do recommend you do because I'm sure you won't be disappointed. Chairman, my concluding comment is, it's pleasing that this council has and is at the forefront of getting Staffordshire back to business. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Mark Taville.
Thank you, Chairman. And Mr, oh, and it is a pleasure, isn't it, to be back in the, in the chamber, Chairman. I agree with Mr Winnington's comments far better than looking at that screen. Mr Sutherland rightly mentions JCB. Full order book, Mike, you were right. 500 new jobs created at JCB, Chairman. And I think it's important to note that JCB isn't all about Roaster and Utoxeter and Chedle, although being a local member for Chedle, I'm very, very grateful for JCB for, for providing the jobs in my area. People travel from all over Staffordshire and out of the county, of course, to work at JCB. So that is great news, Mr Sutherland, you're right. Mr Winnington, Chairman, was speaking about the challenges that we, that we face and undoubtedly we do. And being a member of the hospitality industry, I know only too well about these challenges, Chairman. Challenges that we faced and the challenges moving forward. But I'll tell you what, sadly, some hospitality venues will not recover and haven't recovered. And, you know, it's tremendously sad to see some establishments closed and maybe closed forever. But generally, Chairman, people in our industry, we're a resilient lot. We tend to dust ourselves down and get on with it. And I think Mr Hudson makes a really good point about local people supporting their local pubs and their local shops and their local industries. I think that's really important. But also to Mr Winnington's point, in partnership, Chairman, this county council, working with our district partners and others, couldn't have done more to help businesses in the really dark times, moving forward into hopefully the recovery from this, Chairman. They couldn't do more when they're looking at company startup loans, the Staffordshire startup loans, Staffordshire to Thrive Grants. And then importantly, because young people have had a real kicking, haven't they, during, during the pandemic and, and now. They've really, really suffered from being locked down and the difficulties that we've all faced. But young people have particularly faced difficult situations. So the Staffordshire Apprenticeship 500 Initiative, how fantastic that is. You know, as an ex-apprentice, you'd expect me to support that. And finally, Chairman, the IGNITE scheme. If you haven't read about the IGNITE scheme, please do, because this is a scheme, again, looking at young people to encourage and help young people to maybe take a slightly different, different approach to their career, maybe not going to university. University's not for everyone, Chairman. The IGNITE scheme is encouraging young people to look at starting up their own business, you know, young entrepreneurs. How fantastic that is. So I'd like to thank everyone involved with the support that we've received as a local businessman, the support that local business of, businesses have received and the support that we receive and we will need moving hopefully, and I think it will be, a much brighter future, Chairman.
councillor Derek Cookenfield.
Can I just say, Mr Chairman, on these apprenticeship schemes, right, it's one of the best things that ever come out, right? I was, I was, I dealt with them some years ago myself as a union man, right? And the opportunities that we have for these young people is first class, right? And the problem that we've got at this moment in time, because people, these young ones aren't having, having proper training, right? And that goes a good way. And there's a shortage and a big shortage of skilled people. And by doing an apprenticeship scheme, right, that gives the opportunity to these young people. Take it in our areas which are deprived areas and always been classed as deprived areas. And when you come to look at the government and the government's policy from when it got elected, it said that they were going to move up into the deprived areas, right? And they were going to start alping them out all across the country as far as the deprived areas. And taking the county councillors took the initiative, right, and jumped on that manwagon, right? And now they're looking, right, at the apprenticeships, right? And I think that's something that they can be really proud of, right, that they are doing something for the young people and for the communities that they live in. It saves them roaming the streets, it stops them from meeting up with the wrong sort of people and getting on drugs and everything else that it involves, right? And I think, right, they ought to be patted on the back, the county council, for doing something like this, right? Because it is a benefit, right, to all the young people within our areas. Thank you, Mr Chair.
councillor Paul Northcote.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. All these titles and headlines make good reading, don't they? But we'd like to see evidence actually, that is actually working on the ground in Newcastle. We've got recently our new employment and skills hub that's linked in with Staffordshire County Council and also with the DWP, Local Housing Association, and also the college in Newcastle underlying in the town centre, using government money to open up a new premises there that promotes this, to look at upskilling, but forging those community links with employers, to look at signposting where upskilling is required, where apprenticeship schemes can be used, where to signpost people to, to apply for these grants. So the evidence there is now that we're looking at vacancies in the area that are, we've, we've picked up early reports of logistics and distribution vacancies that number in many hundreds at the moment that are unfilled. So there are the jobs out there and of course with Covid, we're going to see a seismic shift of businesses. Businesses aren't going to exist in the same format in some cases that they did before Covid. So the ones that adapt, the ones that take advantage of the present situations are the ones that are going to thrive. So these are the businesses we need to support to, to make sure that they grow and prosper in the recovery period. And I'm glad to see that this council is supporting that across the board and we're actually seeing evidence of that where it matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you to everybody for their comments. If councillor Philip Atkins was present, he would certainly be jumping up and down and telling us all about JCB in detail. But there's more to the job creation across Staffordshire than JCB. A few examples include the Stone Based Midlands 3D Printing, who are expanding their, doubling their production capacity of 3D printed print manufacturing. Alpha Manufacturing breaking ground on a 35,000 square foot facility constructed in Beacon Park. Quintus Employment Land Development of Branson Lox near Burton upon Trent with a 235,000 square foot floor space available early in 2022. Or Nura, and apologies for the mispronunciation, investing half a million pounds in its facility in Leake, as well as the additional jobs at JCB. To, to the point about apprenticeships, my second son is an apprentice at IMI Engineering in Fradley. He's thriving on that apprenticeship. It is a great way into the world of work. He's learning an awful lot, particularly about the, obviously about the subject that he's dealing with. But university isn't the only route to fulfilment. Apprenticeships are most certainly a really satisfying alternative route. And as far as the apprenticeships are concerned, as councillor Afzal asked about apprenticeships, we have through the programme that we're running with district and boroughs at the moment, we've got over 100 apprenticeships underway. 130 companies have received free training. Nearly 300 students have registered on the IGNITE online learning platform, which has been referred to before, and 7,000 students have received an IGNITE lesson. And over 600 applications have been received for people wanting advice to help and start up their own businesses. This is absolutely fantastic news as we bounce back from the pandemic. As far as the details of the 9% that councillor Afzal referred to, I can't give you the details in the chamber, councillor Afzal. I will ask somebody to write to you with the answer, answer on that. councillor Winnington referred to problem sourcing materials in the national supply chain. Well, actually, this is part of the global supply chain that we're at the receiving end of and some of the national problems that we're experiencing is as a result of that. It's not just the United Kingdom that's bouncing back from the Covid 19 pandemic, it's the rest of the world and that places pressure on supply chains. What we're doing here in Staffordshire through the programmes that we are running is providing local solutions for local problems and that's what we're in the business of. We're aware of the national supply problems. We do speak to our MPs about that, but certainly we, we can demonstrate how much effort we're putting in locally and I hope that people across Staffordshire recognise that effort.
Executive responses for the all party working groups. councillor Simon Tag.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Really pleased to see that the cabinet accepted and is implementing the recommendations from the all party working groups. I was the chair of the Future Economy and also the Aspirations one. I think we've just talked and a long time on the previous item about getting back to business. And I think the learning and some of the recommendations from these working groups are now being implemented as part of that programme, which definitely the Philip White is progressing. I think our aspirations, I think everybody, particularly young peoples, have been taken a knock because of Covid. There's a need to support young people particularly to reach their aspirations, we just talked about through the apprenticeship schemes, that's one way of delivering it. Future economy and making sure our businesses thrive and also entrepreneurs are able to get started and to thrive and to be, move forward to be the next employers and the next wealth creators for the county is really important. And we can help them through that through mentoring, through helping them to go digital, which has been a massive leap over the last 18 months on, onto digital for businesses that hadn't gone before, have had to adapt and they need to do more going forward doing that. Retaining our graduates from our universities is really important, getting them to set down roots in, in Staffordshire and then to set their businesses up in Staffordshire, whether that be at Kew University Science Park or anywhere else, is really important. So they were the recommendations that came out of this working group. And as I said, I'm pleased to see that the cabinet have adopted those and are moving them forward. And I shall be presenting this report to the Prosperous Select Committee chaired by councillor Clements on Friday, tomorrow even. Weeks gone by very quickly. Tomorrow, so I'll be taking questions from members on that part of the all party working group work, which I was involved in. Thank you, Mr Chair.
councillor Mrs Charlotte Atkins.
You, Chair. I'm glad the councillor's just identified the fact he's going to be presenting his report to the Prosperous Overview and Scrutiny Committee because that is exactly what I was going to ask. I'm hoping that the other report will go to the relevant overview and scrutiny committee as well. Maybe that could be confirmed. But are there any plans to establish any further all party working groups? And if so, will members be consulted on their terms of reference? Thank you.
councillor Keith Flunder.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Charlotte, for that. I'm not sure myself what will be happening about presentation to other committees, but I hope that might come. I'm not sure, but it should do. I'm really just to say thank you to everyone that's been helping out. I know that it's normal for this at the end of the processes, but particularly for all the offices. The unusual thing about the all party working groups was that offices were present at the meetings, not just to administer, but also to actually come up with ideas themselves and to input everything into it. And I found that absolutely fascinating and that was a great, great support for all the, all the working groups that I undertook during the four year period. I was particularly responsible for innovation. I'll mention that at the end of it. I think that's a very important way forward that the council needs to work. I'd like to thank all the members, some of whom are not in the chamber today, for the people who know them can actually say thank you to them as well. I very much appreciate that across all parties. And I was very happy that some of the, although I was looking after isolation and loneliness a lot of the time, and I did get a few, few ribs on that on the way, did I not, Alan, at times? I'm not going to say anything about that at the moment. Certain soundtracks were used in certain meetings. But I wasn't really very lonely because the membership, as many of you know, but it's up to 13 people at some of these working groups and members alone. And a number of organisations must have stretched up to about 50 or 60 organisations across the whole county that took part. And it's really those groups I'd like to thank mostly for this because they accepted this. They accepted their input and they were very enthusiastic, nearly all of them, all the members that went forward out there and went across all these different organisations to get input and information into the whole process. And I hope that that will continue in some way because I think that's really important for the future. The visits were fantastic, even with Cath and others and things like this. I think we've, we've bridged gaps and I think that's what we're all about. If we can bridge gaps into our communities, into the organisations, into what we need to make our decisions in a better way, then I think that, that's absolutely fantastic. The recommendations, I think of the output from the four that I undertook, was over 70 different recommendations were put forward to the senior leadership team over those four year period. And they've come back and I think 18 are now being considered over the two projects in relation to isolation, the loneliness of children, but also as we come out of the pandemic in terms of how we're going to respond and get those communities back up and running and working for others. One, just one example of those would be the community help and health points, which I think is something that's going to be vital. If we can get those into the larger villages, into village halls, into other things, as well as working with that voluntary sector and getting that trained up. And I think that lots of people have put all that information into this and I'm really looking forward to that coming forward over the, the coming months. I do believe that it's very important that we get as many people involved in putting together directions and sources that we wouldn't normally have considered into ideas. And I believe the better we are doing that, the better the innovation and the way that we can move forward. So I'm really hoping that this won't be the complete end of what we're doing at the moment, but certainly will be something that we can maybe take forward as a, as a brilliant way of getting people and more people involved in the decision making and the strategy of this, of this council. And I'd recommend that and highly hope that we can keep that, that, that innovation going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to thank both councillor Tag and councillor Flunder for their work on the all, all party working groups and also those people who contributed to it. And just to, as a point of note, the forward look component of what the council does now, Mr Chairman, will be taking, taking place through the scrutiny committees. There is specifically a vice chairman for overview for each of those scrutiny committees to make sure that we continue to look forward for new opportunities in a similar way to the way the all party working groups did. Thank you.
Final financial outturn 2020-2021. councillor Mrs Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Chair. Before the pandemic, public health very much took a back seat. But Covid has thus the public health team very much into the frontline, where of course they've performed and delivered brilliantly. I see from the reports that there are plans to use the uncommitted 5.1 million public health reserve in 2021, 22 to supplement the current programme. But what are the county's plans to invest higher percentage of its budget in, in future to public health? I appreciate that the, the government grant is not increased because inevitably we will face further public health challenges in the future. I don't think that Covid will be the last of the pandemics that we face. Thank you.
councillor Colin Greatrix.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't think we can go without remarking on this performance, the final outturn for last year, which was an incredible year. You think of all the to-ing fro-ing and you can see the figure here in terms of spend on the various grants that came from central government to local government, 48.6 million. I know we get bedazzled by these figures when they're all quoted in millions. But if you imagine that's the payment into Staffordshire, imagine what the bill has been across the country in terms of the provisions that have been given, if you multiply that up by the whole country. But despite that, the end of the year, there's a saving of 1.924 million. So quite an incredible performance when you think of all of the problems of people working from home, people being, having from home, people having to isolate, and various lockdowns, and all the complications and permutations that has brought, and yet the authorities have been able to make a saving and a contribution to reserves. So I think that's to be accoladed, as is normal, and I know councillor Atkins would probably also want to say about the capital programme, we very rarely spend as much time talking about the capital, but the big investments on schools, highways, and economic regeneration, I think councillor Deville's already spoken, councillor Winnington has spoken about the benefits of some of that economic regeneration money. These are all very positive things, and it's business as usual. So despite the problems of the last year, there has been a saving in the revenue budget, and has been a tremendous contribution towards the capital outturn. So congratulations to everybody involved.
Councillor Mike Sutherland.
Thank you Chair, and I'd like to echo what councillor Greitrix has said. Within the confines of this report, it's worth reflecting that within four weeks of this chamber agreeing a five-year MTFS budget back in February 2020, we were faced with the reality of Covid-19. The impact was immediate, an emergency purchase of PPE equipment, early payments to care providers, so essential care services were not interrupted and continued. Managing the business of this council from that point on was, to say the least, challenging. And it's a tribute to all staff across the whole of the organisation that we did just that. Our communities also showed extraordinary community spirit, and as members, we played our part, whether it was supporting with grants or giving their time voluntary, helping out where it was needed on a local basis. Focusing on the finances, it's right that we are thankful for the speedy response from the government with Covid grant payments in both the lockdown periods, although I have to say, and it's personal, that they weren't so generous in the second lockdown period. But this enabled us to function well during the difficult year. Concluding, in year the report does show, as has already been said, a saving of 1.9 across all portfolios, but we also invested in schools, highways, and economic regeneration with a total of 132 million spend. And I know we'll be reminded going forward, we still have a 62 million pound savings plan that needs to be delivered by 2025, coupled with increased demand pressures on adult health, children's services that need to be addressed. So thank you Chair.
Councillor Ian Parry.
Thank you Chairman. This is the very last time I'm going to try and garner any credit for the work of my former colleague, my colleague and friend and former member for finance, Cabinet Member for Finance, who I must say, Chair, has done a remarkable job in that role in this council's probably most difficult and challenging time, financially and in any other way as well. But to be able to hold the controls necessary for the council through that period has been a remarkable achievement, and I think that's a political achievement, political leadership is achievement, as much as an officer achievement. So I must pay credit for my friend and colleague, County Councillor Sutherland. Everybody I think has alluded to the fact that the challenge for this County Council during the last financial year was multi-dimensional. The pandemic threw a spanner of unique size and complexity into the works of this County Council, which is already in itself a very complicated organisation with lots of moving parts. And to try and remodel, repurpose in a very short space of time, the functions and purpose of this council in order to respond and keep people safe and secure, to provide the necessary help to communities, to organise all of those pandemic-related service and support matters such as PPE, test and trace, test centres, vaccination centres, all of that. But also, we've had to remodel the decision-making processes in this council. If we were not allowed, and if we weren't able to, meet as a council online, for the executive to meet online, for officers and senior members of the council to meet online, decision-making would have been much more difficult, and I think would have made the whole thing more challenging. So imagine, having to do all of those things, having to repurpose staff from doing their normal job on day one to a completely different job on day two, which may well be customer-focused, putting themselves in harm's way in order to ensure that food, PPE, all of that sort of stuff was done to support the residents of Staffordshire. Imagine all of that complexity, imagine all that challenge, and at the same time, within a week or two, we were able to wire up the technology to allow this council to operate virtually, online seamlessly. This council has not missed a beat over the last 12 months in terms of making sure that it provides all the services that it needs to provide, looking after children, looking after the vulnerable and elderly, ensuring that we're still building schools, ensuring that we're still, as much as possible and practical, we can deliver all those capital programmes. And in fact, most of our capital programme was delivered in full. But the mathematics that goes behind that is immense. The money that came in, already alluded to the fact, huge sums of money coming in, passported or utilised in order to strengthen and support the services that we've got. So there's an awful lot, there's a massive story, that one day when we sit back, when all this is over and look back at this, we can actually say, and I'm quoting our chief executive, because he's a military man, we had a good war.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just returning to councillor Atkins' question about public health allocations, we don't have quite as much allocations as councillor Atkins referred to, we've got about 1.2 million pounds of uncommitted funds. And it is the case that one public health crisis can sometimes lead to another, as you correctly identified, not necessarily a pandemic, but in this case, we are concerned about sexual health services and drug and alcohol services, so we will be allocating additional resources to those three services looking forward. Public health ring fence grants is only allocated on a single-year basis, so we're not, I'm afraid at this point, able to predict any further forward than 12 months. An unsatisfactory state of affairs, but one that I hope you will recognise gives us limited leeway, but we are doing something about the issues that we're facing.
National Bus Strategy, Enhanced Partnership. Councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you very much Chairman. I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to the bus company Chase Rider for listening to our concerns by myself and Theo Clark MP regarding the lack of transport in the south end of Stafford. 1,200 homes on the Wildwood Estate and at least 1,000 in Bassage, where many elderly people reside, will now benefit from a bus service. I would also like to add also the reinstatement of the bus service in Penkside. My message to everyone in Staffordshire, and especially Stafford South East Division, in order to retain our bus service, please, please, use it or lose it. Thank you Chairman.
Councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you Chairman. I welcome this piece of work. It's important, and echoing the councillor Edgela's comments there, use it, don't lose it, is essential. But some of our rural communities have already lost it, and not necessarily for the right reasons. I think there are clear, innovative ways that the bus companies can think about connecting with rural communities, because if we, as a country, are looking at different ways of commuting and so forth, we must bring our rural communities on that journey. I was very disappointed to witness and participate in the National Bus Strategy at the LGA when it was very, very urban-centric, and it really didn't offer much for the rurals. Now, we are a rural county, and it is important that actually that message gets across to that, because it's all very well having these strategies for urban areas, but we, in the rurals, rely on transport, rely on our cars, how can we then get this carbon zero if we're forced onto it and not being able to do it any other way? So I do urge bus companies to be able to think about how they are connecting those rural communities. Thank you Chairman.
Councillor Mrs Atkins.
Chair, we desperately need a bus service improvement plan, so I very much welcome this initiative. Many communities, as councillors have said, in Staffordshire have been cut off from any public transport. Bus use has been in decline for many years, so we cannot simply build back the same way as it has been before, we have to be much more innovative to ensure that we meet the needs of diverse communities. And so I hope this council will play a pivotal role in working with all bus operators to meet the needs of local people, whether they be in the towns or the rural areas. Now, earlier this year, I was shocked to hear that one bus operator was using a loophole in the law to transport schoolchildren to school in Leake with no seatbelts. I hope that that practice will now end. If we want to improve air quality, encourage more active lifestyles and greater independence, both for younger people and for older people, buses are absolutely vital. I hope that this council will do all it can to build a really effective partnership with bus operators right across the county. Thank you Chair.
Councillor David Smith.
Chairman, could I first just mention, I gather in a discussion that I've had outside this council, that we have already spoken to the bus operators about them leaving their engines running when they're at bus stops. I really think we ought to reinforce that. Those of us that came into the council this morning may well have seen buses parked at the end of the road here with their engines running, pumping out filth. I really think we need to be very, very much stronger with the bus companies about that situation. But Chairman, the main reason that I wanted to speak was that, I would reiterate the points which have been made by other members this morning about the problems of the rural areas. I can fully understand that if we are running buses where it's costing 10 pounds to take somebody for a contribution, that they're probably only paying 50p towards, is not a sensible way of using this authority's money. But by the same token, we have to consider what the implications are of having villages that are isolated in a way that have no services whatsoever. It effectively, Chairman, we've talked earlier on today about apprenticeships. What's the situation if we have an apprentice in a village that can't get to work? We really can't condone that sort of situation, we need to find a way of helping. And so I would urge the council to look at having an open discussion with our parish councils and our communities about what do they consider the alternatives are. It doesn't have to be a bus that comes to a village every hour, there are other alternatives. And I think that the vision and imagination of people beyond this council is something that we should be making great use of. And I'm certainly talking to my parish councils about how they feel better services could be provided. I'm not necessarily saying it will be ring and ride, but it may be some sort of similar operation that would allow us to communicate with our villages better. And it may also be worthwhile us looking at the possibility of a survey across some of our villages to find out what journeys people want to make, and how they feel their isolation can be eased. And I would certainly encourage us to be able to do that, and I would encourage us to be talking to our parish councils about their contribution and what we can do. Thank you Chairman.
Councillor Mrs Pedezi.
Thank you Chair. What is difficult to understand Chair? The bus companies are not adequately financially supported. Saying use your service or lose it smacks very much of blaming the victim. It's quite straightforward. If bus tickets, bus charges were cheaper, if the bus services were more reliable and regular and ran on routes that were actually helpful to people, we would have no problem in getting more passengers. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Ian Lorden.
Thank you Chairman. During the conversations that have gone on about this bus strategy, I noticed with dismay that Biddelf wasn't mentioned at all. Now, Biddelf is a, the town of Biddelf is a collection of small villages, ex-mining villages in fact, and we have a bus service that is paid for by the town council. And really, this is not particularly an adequate way of doing things, because funds are being diverted to pay for the bus, up to, I think it's 50,000 a year, and a bit lower, and these funds should be spent on other things in the town. I would urgently ask that Biddelf be put on the list for discussion when we do come to a decision about how this new bus service is going to be funded and run, please. Thank you.
Councillor Mrs Jill Heath.
Yeah, a bit of good news really, for my division anyway. This spring, the transport team here applied for a bid for a rural mobility fund. They did a lot of hard work, and I'm pleased to say they were successful with the fund. They've been awarded a million and 38, I don't know quite where the 38 comes in, but it's a million and 38 and so many pence, I can't remember the pence, over three years. The decision was taken to spend it in my division mainly really, because we have no buses at all, as councillor Atkins will know. We've just got one Mullins Connect left over from an initiative we had a few years ago, but it's not a very active service. Over the three years, this will be a demand-responsive scheme, and the idea is to sort of meet up Longner, Bottom House, and there's another one being thought about, where we can pick people up at home when they ring for a bus, take them to the hub, and then they can access Buxton, Leake, Ashbourne, and get about a bit, because we do not have any other transport. And really positive to me, I mean, my mailbag at the moment is so busy with people in living in villages where they've been absolutely, you know, smothered with visitors, parking in gateways, farmers can't get in the fields, they can't get heavy tractors passed down the low lanes because the cars are everywhere, it's a nightmare. So if we can get these buses which take them from the villages to towns, hopefully they can put the bikes on these low buses and come out to the country and leave the cars at home. So I'm really looking forward to it, there's still a lot of work to be done, we've got the cash, and now we're putting the details in, and I'm really pleased to be involved in the plans, so a bit of good news, anyway, for Leake Rural. Thank you.
Councillor Mrs Jill Waring.
I would just like to, in response to the cuts to the bus service, just to tell you about the experience that I had. I do live in the far north of the county, and our bus service was cut. It was costing 1,100 pounds a week to run, and there was an average of 4.2 people a day using the bus, so it had to go. I had probably about a couple hundred complaints about it, I was a new council, it was the first thing I dealt with. But fortunately for me, there was a bus tour company in our ward that was able to put on a minibus twice a week. on a minibus twice a week. Well, out of the 200 complaints that we had, we boiled it down and we actually found there was only really 12 people that actually needed that bus. And so for a while, the bus company put on this free bus twice a week and it was a lifeline for these people. Now, that ended at the beginning of Covid. And the other thing I wanted to say was, being able to put on a service like that free of charge for people, the operator couldn't introduce a charge because the rules and regulations and laws surrounding it are just so very complicated, so it got very difficult. But I'd just like to say, I will be speaking to Jill Heath to find out all the information you've got, Jill, and look towards putting something back in the area where I live. Thank you.
Commissioner Ian Parry.
Thank you, Chair. This is something which affects us in all sorts of different ways, whether that is, as people have said, you know, getting to a place of work as a young apprentice, getting to a place of education as a young student, getting to the shops, getting to the hospital, getting to the GP, getting to see your friends, all sorts of things. But we mustn't underestimate the complexity of offering a comprehensive and usable bus service in a large rural county. Much of the thinking around this, much of the ambition in the national bus strategy is very urban based, very large city based, which has much easier solutions than a large rural county. Now, I know we all get complaints, I've got emails from residents that have got challenges about getting youngsters to various places. Money, money, money was not the problem. Money did not remove buses from the roads. You know, funding cuts did not move buses off the roads. Cars moved buses off the roads. In parts of our county, you know, car ownership is up in the 90%, and that's why we have buses. At one time, we had buses in this county and we looked at the utilisation and cost per trip. In some places and in some cases, the cost per trip was £14 per person per journey. Now, that seems, you ask any taxpayer, any taxpayer, if they think that's good value for money. And I find, I think you'll find it very difficult to find anyone who thinks that's good value for money. So we've got to think carefully about what is achievable and not unreasonably raising people's expectations. What can be achieved though? What can be achieved? We're not quite sure. I think there has been a lack of creativity and innovation about how connectivity, about transportation, public transportation can be designed in this county that goes some way, it may only be a marginal improvement, but some way to fixing some of these problems. And I heard it a couple of times this morning, that people said, actually, these are local fixes, parish council fixes that, or whatever. If this money can help us to drive some innovation, I think that would be useful, that would be useful. But let's not get, run away with the idea that we're going to see buses. We've had that, we've had boxes of fresh air running at very high taxpayer cost around this county for many years, and unfortunately, it came to an end. Please don't forget, this county council, any county council, does not run buses. We don't have any buses. We have no access to buses, nor do we have any control of buses. We do subsidise buses where and when we feel those routes need some form of financial protection in order to preserve them because they are critical. And they are becoming less and less and less because some of those journeys, even they, are becoming less used. We've got to recognise that car utilisation, perhaps that might offer some assistance. Perhaps micro type of public transport may be a partial solution. But I do think, you know, innovation is the key to all this, and if we can put some money into that without raising expectations, without thinking we're going to get back to a kind of an urban style of public transport in this county, I think that's as much as we can hope for. But let's hope for a lot, and if we don't get a lot, let's see what we can achieve.
Commissioner Bernard Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just building on all that's been said, I think buses with dirty diesel engines will find themselves having to think about innovation if they couple it with Euro six emissions and the district that they operate in having a climate change action plan. We have these, an action plan in East Staffordshire and we're trying to work with the bus companies to address Euro six emissions. And I'm hoping that that will be a trigger to give them the encouragement to address, as my friend, Mr. Parry has said, innovation. I'd also just like to take this opportunity to, because there is a link, to pay tribute to the taxi trade. In East Staffordshire, there are a lot of old diesel taxis and I do know about the challenges that they're facing. And there is some clear evidence they're trying very, very hard, the taxi trade, to address Euro six emissions. They need help and support and the local authority can perhaps help them in that respect. But it's a big problem and a big challenge and I don't think anyone in this chamber can deny it. We all need to work together and move forward together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Paul Norvikot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that introduction. I welcome this strategy and I welcome also the Cabinet's commitment to developing an enhanced partnership and bus service improvement plan. During Covid, it's provided many opportunities to actually stop and observe what is happening in our society and communities. And to look at functionality in particular, the bus service has been particularly acute, especially akin to my very rural division of Newcastle Rural. I've had many representations from the PC and residents that haven't just provided anecdotal evidence, but consistent information that has been quite replicated in other areas. The quickest way to kill a service, a local service, is to alter timetables frequently, to place curfews on services, early mornings, late afternoon, evenings, and not to provide the information of changes. It's no wonder that the service is in decline if the residents don't even know when the bus services are and how to respond to changes at short notice. I think the time now needs some focused dialogue with public transport operators. We need to make it clear what we expect as a council on behalf of the residents that we represent, what we expect a fit for purpose service to be. We need to look why services are declining. Obviously, there's going to be cost implications. My colleague behind, Commissioner Parry, talks about cost per trip. Now, these costs per trip were based on an existing service. These costs per trip are not based on what can happen. So there needs to be more innovation, that other councillors have talked about today briefly. Need to look at solutions, particularly for rural areas, such as smaller, quicker vehicles that are fit for purpose and not just focused on lucrative routes being cherry picked at the expense of others. And communication needs to be much more improved with residents, the front-facing service needs to change and adapt to what's expected in a modern society. And above all, it needs to be reliable. If there's no reliability there, then users will not use it. They want reliable services to take them to college, to work, or to wherever it needs to go, for hospitals, et cetera. If that service isn't providing that to residents, then it's failed. We need to be more innovative and we need to make that point clear to bus operators, what we expect in terms of going forward to deliver a service that's got a fighting chance to meet the needs of rural areas particularly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner David Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, obviously, nationally, the bus companies have suffered due to the Covid crisis. And at one stage, we were actually telling people not to get onto buses due to the dangers. That has changed and obviously with this new enhanced partnership that we are looking to work with the bus companies on, that is exactly what we want to address. However, I've got to say that it is not for the council to say what the bus companies will or won't do, this is for the innovation of the bus companies to come up with for them, because remembering that these bus companies are commercial concerns, they have to run commercially, they have to be financially viable for those. We do actually support some where it's needed, but actually, the amount of people utilising buses has reduced and has continued to reduce, as Commissioner Parry said, for several years. I think we are looking at doing, and what we have started to do with our initial talks with all the bus companies throughout Staffordshire, is looking at what vehicles they've got, what vehicles will be appropriate for the future, not just changing to electric because actually, for some of the bus companies, they've already said that is not financially viable to do at present due to current costs. The change in such as we are in Stoke-on-Trent, where we're changing the buses to have the new Euro six exhaust systems being fitted. So these are things that we have already spoken with the bus companies on and there are lots of concerns out there from a financial and viability issue with the fact that these exhausts, how good they are, how long they will last for a bus. The actual comment that Commissioner Edgela made about 'use it or lose it' is exactly right. When we talk about victims of buses being removed, when there are no people on those buses as a financial business, it is absolutely no point in not saying that that will get removed. So people need to use them. Staffordshire was a perfect example where we had the connect buses and unfortunately, people didn't use them. The money was put out there from a grant and unfortunately, didn't use them, so we had to stop them. These are exactly the things that we need to look at, which is why, if you look at the actual strategy, we are looking at the bus services to do the innovation, them to work with us to say what would be a better experience for people to be able to use the buses, what would be a better experience for them when they're at their stops and have that right information, and how that information about when the buses will turn up and when that will be and what the actual routes are. Those are the things we are working with the bus companies on, but it is for them to come up with. We are here to support them with that and remembering we don't get the £3 billion as a single authority, that is a national £3 billion. We do not know how much we are going to be allocated and in that, obviously, we will try to work with the bus companies to ensure we give the best possible service to our residents and customers.
Covid nineteen. Commissioner Charlotte Atkins.
Chair, I wanted to come in on this paragraph, simply because in the middle paragraph of this section, it says, while vaccines have broken the link between Covid infections and hospital visits or deaths, sadly, although the vaccination rollout by the NHS has been remarkable, I don't believe that the vaccines have actually broken the link, but actually have weakened the link between the two. So that is why it's so vital that we all continue to take precautions, particularly to protect the most vulnerable or for those people who, for whatever reason, can't get a vaccination. Thank you.
Commissioner Jonathan Price.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. This follows on from item one as well, which was to do with the Covid outbreak board. But I just wanted to say, as the summer term ends and school finishes for another year, I wanted to take the time to thank teachers and staff for everything they've done over the past 12 months and beyond. It's been like a school year, like it's been a school year unlike any other. Schools have coped with tremendous change and disruption, implemented new measures to keep people safe in school, and above all, they've helped thousands of children and young adults continue with their education. The pressures that schools have faced has been well documented and we have certainly seen this in Staffordshire. What is perhaps less well documented is how resilient our head teachers and school staff have been throughout this Covid pandemic. We have seen how hard you have worked to ensure children can keep learning, whether that's in a bubble in school or online, while they are still isolating at home. And as we are aware, there was a large proportion of children isolating the last couple of days before the breakup for the summer term. As the county opens, we know there will be more challenges ahead, which is why the county council will keep a local outbreak team dedicated to supporting education in early year settings. The team will also be ensuring that settings are fully briefed on the latest guidance, et cetera, ready for the new school year in September. And I wanted to thank the educational cell of our outbreak control board for all of their hard work supporting our schools and places of learning. So once again, I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone involved in education settings for their hard work over the past year. And I hope you find some time to have a well-earned break over the summer holidays, which is very well deserved. Thank you.
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Atkins' remark, the vaccine hasn't broken the link, she's right. It's certainly given the virus a bloody nose, but we'd need to continue to work hard to encourage people to get vaccinated, and I think we referred to that extensively in the first paragraph, Mr. Chairman.
Superfast Staffordshire. Commissioner Mark Wellington.
Thank you, Chair. This has been an ongoing good news story for the county. I think, no, I'm not on Cabinet, it's been passed on to, sorry, it's been passed on to the new cabinet member. And just for the members in the chamber who weren't here when we started it, someone came to me and said that we want to increase Staffordshire to be a superfast county. Now, at that time, 65% of the population had somewhere in the region of 28 megabits. No one else did. We had some really poor speeds within the county. We put a proposal together, we spoke to different partners, and ultimately, Staffordshire County Council put £7.5 million into this. That was matched by Openreach and we started digging the county up and taking the power supplies and putting new boxes in and we ended up in a situation where we wanted to achieve 90% of the population having superfast broadband. We actually got 97% of the population with superfast broadband in the end. And I just wanted to speak this morning just to thank the team, Paul Chatwin and his team from Staffordshire County Council, Openreach, and indeed, the Government Broadband UK, because everybody puts 110% into this and it has been brilliant. However, 28 megabits, which was considered superfast, isn't enough now. Our aspiration really has got to be to try and get fibre to premise for every single premise within Staffordshire. Let's get gigabit, which is 1,000 bits, and that depends on the technology you put either end, it can be more than that. So I think that's an aspiration we as a council ought to have and I hope Simon takes that on board. I think it's incredible, the last 3% that we've got, we've got to be looking at fibre to premise as soon as possible with them. In my area, there's been three or four villages that have had fibre. The village is important, but it's also important for the bigger picture. It's important for getting 5G. Without 5G, we can't run autonomous vehicles. Without 5G, we can't work the fields in the future because we'll have robots and GPS and the whole gamut of the rural areas is going to change, but we do need to make sure we get that 5G. And just a very quick one for Ian Parry. In terms of innovation, what could be better than an autonomous vehicle that zips off with its electric motors and picks people up when they want it without a driver? How much would that cost for the rural villages? Not a lot, but it's just that's a view for the future. But ultimately, thanks to the team that have done this, thanks to Cabinet who had the foresight to spend £7.5 million 10 years ago, and thanks to all the people, all the way from fitters, from the people from, all the way from fitters, from the engineers, right the way through to the, the bosses for the work they've done on this, it's been brilliant. And if Simon wants any hand in the future, give us a shout.
Is that an electric tractor and trailer?
Sorry, they have very, very long cables.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs. Pedezi.
Thank you, Chair. Superfast broadband aside, could I ask if we have an estimate of how many households in Staffordshire have no broadband connection at all, please?
Thank you. Councillor Derek Hookfield.
Can, can it, I can't stand up, can it? Right, can I just say, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry you tried to jump in before, right, because you know I like two bites of the cherry, right? And can I just say I'm getting referred back to item six, right? But the simple reason is I pressed my buzzer.
No, you, you can't, I'm sorry. I can only call people who press the button, councillor.
Look, I'm sorry, right, but, right, I pressed my buzzer, right? And you just didn't reply, you didn't come back to me, right? And I requested, right, under item six that I'd be allowed to speak.
No, I'm sorry you can't councillor.
So that's twice, twice you've done that.
No, you're not pressing the button, it's not coming up here on our screen.
I'm pressing my buzzer, I'm pressing my buzzer, come on. How many witnesses do you need? Goodness gracious.
Councillor Hookfield, if you're willing to wait till the end of a leader's statement, then, then if you'll wait till the end of a leader's statement.
The end.
Then, yeah, then I will call you as an individual item.
And you'll definitely call me.
If you, if you're still in the chain BS.
Can I have that in writing, please?
Unless you're excluded.
Oh, he didn't write it.
Councillor Colin Graytrix.
Chairman, I'm waiting for the light, so come on now. It's ironic, we've just been talking about technology and councillor Hookfield's had a problem. I wanted to go back to what councillor Wellington was saying in terms of almost impatience with technology and I, I know, I was a child of the sixties and I don't look old enough, but I do remember some of the advances then. And we were very enamoured with anything that was an improvement. I remember black and white TV and the prospect of it going from four, three, five lines to six, two, five and the improved picture we were going to get. And then of course, the, the phone boxes when you didn't need to press button A and press button B because there was a phone card and you didn't have to have coins. What an advance that was. When we used to have to find a floppy disk to put an Encyclopedia Britannica in to get some information and then suddenly the worldwide web was created. I mean, I remember fax machines and tele printers in my working days, which have been replaced by email, so it's not all good news. However, what we've got here is tremendous advances and tremendous impatience. You know, we're talking about ninety-seven percent coverage and it's a fantastic partnership as councillor Wellington said, you know, for, for Openreach and the councils and everybody else in terms of installations to get this achievement. Councillor Pedezi's comments about access to broadband for residents, this report refers to premises as in work premises, but obviously making ninety-seven percent of work premises available to get broadband means that ninety-seven percent of households can get that sort of access because they, they're going to be in line. It's a separate matter in terms of whether those households do apply and get their broadband, but it is a fantastic achievement and the level of technology advance is, is also to be remarked upon. I don't even understand what eighty megabits per second means, but I gather it's a big number, so it must be good. So congratulations, as Mark Winton said, to all those involved.
Councillor Simon Tag.
Thank you, Chairman. Just going back to councillor Hookfield, I don't, I was watching, you didn't press your button, so we're talking about brand new technology here. This is nineteen sixties technology, you've still got to get up to date on, but I'm glad that the chairman is going to allow you to raise your very important point towards the end. Okay. But I think as, as councillor Winton just said, this is a really good news story and I think we, we should congratulate him for the work that he's done and also the, the staff and the, the operator that's worked this forward. And as we walk around the county, we can see these boxes everywhere, can't we, with Staffordshire County Council logo on for superfast broadband and that's a delivery that's happened over the last few years when councillor Wellington was the cabinet member. I think, you know, since twenty thirteen, just when we just had sixty-five percent of properties connected to the fast speeds, up to ninety-seven percent as we've already said, are now benefiting from that. And over the course of the programme, more than eighty-two thousand premises have gained access and, and recent years, over six thousand premises have been receiving ultra-fast full fibre broadband, so over a thousand megabytes. Now, it's a huge success, we shouldn't rest on that success because there are still obviously twenty thousand premises that don't benefit from the superfast broadband and we must investigate ways to get them on, on board. I think the question from the councillor about people with no broadband, I'm sure we can let have some figures on digital exclusion, but of course, a lot of people do have data connections through their phone as well, which bumps that up even further, but we will get some details to you on digital exclusion in the county. Looking forward, we're developing and in the process and I'm, I'm working on a long-term digital strategy for Staffordshire. This will focus on gigabit technology and provision for all of our communities and maximising the benefits of the five G rollout and connecting those isolating areas and growing that digital economy, which is, is really important as we've seen from Covid, as I said earlier, the massive move on to digital, the massive move on to using the internet for business transactions and we need to have our businesses and our residents with the fastest connections possible to download movies, to, to make online purchases and to do all of their business online and that's what we intend to do. That will be what our strategy will be for Staffordshire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just finally, my word of thanks to councillor Winnington for his efforts in getting us to this point, a tremendous effort and great connectivity across the county so far. As far as his suggestion around autonomous vehicles being able to be called and going picking people up, once we've got full five G infrastructure in place, I'm not sure about that, to be honest, councillor Winnington, but I can tell you that councillor Parry has volunteered to have a go at the first Staffordshire jet pack when that arrives and see how well that works.
Thank you, folks. Euro two thousand twenty. Councillor Jessel.
It's come on here. Ah, I'm in. I've obviously got a stronger finger than you have, it's now working. Thank you very much, Chairman. I'll, I'll start off by admitting that I am not a football aficionado. Actually rugby is more my game. I've got a supporter there, but I thought, I would like to say a few words. I think we were all sitting on the edge of our seats and so desperately disappointed, but very, very proud of our national team. Football didn't come quite home, but I'm absolutely delighted to hear that there was reference made to the England team after their matches returning to the home of football. The home of football is St George's Park, which is in Taiton Hill, in my division of Needwood Forest, but importantly, it's in Staffordshire, the heart of the country. And I thought it was an opportunity to just celebrate what a fantastic facility that is and is testament to the long-term vision that the FA had in the nineteen nineties. The site was bought in two thousand and one and initially the pitches were set out and those who can remember, because of the escalating costs of the Wembley Stadium, all the work at Taiton Hill was put on hold. And a number of us locally were really angry and really believed that, you know, we got to fight hard. The investment was going into London to the detriment of Staffordshire. I'm delighted to say that with some hard campaigning, the FA decided to carry on with their investment. The vision was that the success of a national team is not about just the players on the field, but the players off the field, all the support teams, the management and the FA Centre at St George's Park is very much about that education, that development of the whole of the team. But it's actually the support they give to disabled people, the facilities are used by young and old, men and women, and I think it's a tremendous local asset, but a tremendous national asset. Apart from that as well, they occasionally let rugby league use it, not really, I'm a young rugby, I'm, I'm absolutely delighted, Tina is an ally of mine, but they do actually allow the facilities to be used by other sports because the facilities there, the physio facilities, the gyms, not only the hotels, the spa, the whole setup there is absolutely tremendous. I will be doing a, a walk with the local Alzheimer's group, they're doing a memory walk around St George's Park in September and they do play that part in the local community. And apart from that, they are a big employer in the area. They employ, I haven't got the up-to-date figures, but at one time it was certainly in excess of four hundred people across the whole site. So for our area, they're a big player in more ways than one. So football is already at St George's Park, it's home in the heart of this great nation and in the heart of Staffordshire. Thank you very much, Chair.
Councillor Bernard Peters.
Thank you, Chair, and let me join with councillor Jessel. As a Burtonian myself, we celebrate St George's Park and it really is the university of football as far as I'm concerned. But on a more sobering note, post the competition, how disappointed we were, we all were, and I'll say we all were, to hear the outrageous comments made on various media platforms of a racist nature towards three outstanding British footballers. I personally was taken aback quite a lot by that because as you all know, you've heard me say many times before, Burton-on-Trent is a very diverse community and we're able to celebrate our day-to-day life with people of all nationalities and to observe the outrageous vicious comments directed at these three guys was totally unacceptable. And I would echo the Prime Minister's comments when he said, when he made his comment, that these people should crawl back under the stone where they originated from. And I hope that members will share my frustration with that. Thank you.
Councillor Ashad Afso.
Thank you, Chair. I just wish to share my sentiments like the fellow councillors have just mentioned. I wish to applaud the achievements of the England Euro twenty twenty football team in reaching the final of the Euro twenty twenty. The multicultural composition of the team, the sense of mutual support which they exude as a model of the whole country. As a county councillor representing a wide BAME community, I wish to express my deep disappointment and concern that the achievement was marred by disgrace or racial abuse. The England team are an example, a gift, a reflection of what's best about this country. Rashford, Sancho, Osaka showed incredible courage in stepping up to take penalties. Those who are racially abusing them show the opposite. In my eyes, those engaging in racial abuse must be held accountable. We as county councillors must unite in the fight for racism. Thank you.
Councillor Jill Hood.
Thank you, Chairman. Probably like most of you, the night of the football, I had all my family round. Unfortunately, there were four Wolves supporters and two Stoke supporters, so it didn't begin well. And my four daughters had made their mind up that nothing Italian was going to be in our house, absolutely nothing, not even a shred of pizza. When the result came, my dog was kicked out because he's an Italian Spinone, so I'm afraid he paid the price. But the point I want to make, first of all, I've never been to St George's Park, but I would like to go, Mrs. Jessel, I hope you'll invite me. Secondly, I believe that this tournament, I'm sorry to demean by calling it a tournament, was one of the most fantastic we've ever seen in the way that the face of football has changed. In the past, we've seen these extortionately paid young men on the field, parading their wags, their painted beauties and in a very vulgar way, showing our young people how much money they've got with their flash cars and their attitudes, always on the front of the newspapers, having these dalliances with young women in hotels. It's changed since Mr. Southgate's taken over and I'm delighted. I think they all, all of our young people can aspire to every single one of those players. And the way Gareth Southgate, he didn't control, but he cajoled and he, he managed them in a way that I've never seen any other manager work the young team. And I think we can be extremely proud of them. I thought it was hilarious when I read a tweet, how was Marcus Rashford going to manage being the leader of the opposition? I don't know. He is a remarkable young man, as they all are, but I'm glad that football has changed the way it has and I just hope that our youngsters see that participating in sport is an enormous achievement and to get to playing for your country, you know, what, what better accolade than that, rather than the wealth that comes with these players. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Derek Hookfield.
Oh, it's on. Put the flag on. Didn't we do well? I think we've got a little bit of interfering, somebody's trying to stop me from talking, Chair. I, I hope it isn't you. Can I just say, as far as the football, I, I think we've all got to say how fantastic it really was. I mean, we sat down, we enjoyed it, even my own wife sat there and watched the football, really, and that's asking for something, right, for my wife to watch football, Coronation Street and all them sort of things, all into it. But joking aside, Mr. Chairman, right, on what did happen after the match, right, that did spoil it for everybody really, right? You can get half a dozen people, right, that spoil everything for everybody. And I'd like the, the leader to make the statement today that this council, right, is appalled by what's happened and we are a non-racist council and I'll leave that with the leader.
Thank you. Councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Chair. The England team certainly did us proud. Their players are certainly role models on and off the pitch. Talking about Marcus Rashford, well, he certainly became the name of a generation during the pandemic, fighting against food poverty and even securing a U-turn from the government on free school meals, you know, quite a record. Yet he and his teammates were subjected to vile racist abuse and I think that demonstrates that taking the knee is not just gesture politics, but a very necessary repudiation of racism in football. They should be applauded, not abused for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ian Lawton.
Thank you, Chairman. Very briefly, I agree with all that's been said. I, when I was doing your job, I have the honour to welcome Prince William and Kate to St George's Park and address the crowd and it is a fantastic place. Everything that's been said about it, I would underline and if you can get the chance to go there, do go and see it, it's one of the icons of Staffordshire. But can I just say, the behaviour of the crowds when we sadly lost the European Cup, didn't surprise me in the slightest. May I just remind this council, ladies and gentlemen, that next month, the true sport of England is being played, the Rugby Union game against South Africa. It is the British Isles plus Southern Ireland team, the Lions, and they're going out there to South Africa and we're going to swamp them. So I would, and if you want to see how crowds, crowds behave, do go out there, but remember they are South Africans, not, not particularly British. But I would recommend it, it is the up-and-coming number one sport in Great Britain. Bugger the round ball, go for the oval one. Thank you.
I wish it was become number one sport, but I think unfortunately we've got a long way to go still. Councillor Mark Deville. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Afso.
Mr Afzal and Mr Peters, oh, wow, that was, they were powerful statements, and I couldn't agree with you more. I am a, Mrs Jessel and Mr Lawson aren't football aficionados. As a Stoke City supporter, I am, Chairman. Mrs Hood, you're right. Gareth Southgate's put together a squad of young men that I think the whole nation are proud of and damn well should be proud of. No egos amongst them, just really want to do the very best for themselves, for their families, and for the nation. And I think they did do, Chairman, and I think football will come home from Qatar in the World Cup next year, I think. Just expanding on Mrs Jessel is tremendously proud, of course, of St George's Park, it's within her division. I've had the opportunity and the, I've had the opportunity to visit on a number of occasions, actually played five-a-side football there, Mr Chairman. It is a tremendous facility, tremendous facility, we know that. But you know, the most important thing about St George's Park, other than, of course, it being in, right in the middle of Staffordshire, Gareth Southgate's plan, which very, very nearly worked and will work in Qatar, was spawned and produced in Staffordshire. The very best thing about St George's Park is, though, its inclusivity, the fact that it does encourage pub players like me, girls, boys, men, women, disabled people, it encourages everyone to use that wonderful facility. And that goes against everything that those idiots posted on social media, those total idiots on social media, that their opinions are just totally drowned, aren't they, by the overwhelming pride and the opinions of the millions and millions and millions of very decent people in England? I agree, councillor Afzal and councillor Peters, they were an absolute disgrace to our country, and their opinions just don't matter, do they? And we're totally swamped by the great achievement of those young men and the opinions of all us very, very decent people.
Thank you. councillor Mike Worthington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd just like to say that football did come home in our household, because my son's my pre-Italian lady, and I can assure you, there was lots of celebration going on, although my son was a bit upset about it, he didn't appreciate it. But no, it was a tremendous achievement, and I have to say, no one's mentioning it, but I do think on the night that the Italian team were the better team on the night, so congratulations. Thank you.
councillor Mark Worthington.
Thank you, Chair. Congratulations to England for where they got to. I've got to admit, I tend to go towards the funny shaped balls side of things, but England really did a fantastic job, and I watch the game, I don't often watch football, and I'm afraid the Italians were pretty good. But the English guys worked the little thingies off. It was fantastic. Having been abused pre-election by bottom feeders on antisocial media, I feel so sorry for those guys, because what I got was minimal, and what they're getting is terrible, they should be rooted out, and I think true bottom feeders, they should put in the bottom of a pool somewhere, that's scum. So just finally, for councillor Lawson, really, just to prove that Staffordshire County Council looks after rugby players and the rugby side, we've actually positively contributed towards rugby within Staffordshire. The SWAR allowed burly fields to be developed, that's in Stafford. The rugby club was taken as part of that development, and we've now got a state-of-the-art, and everyone ought to go and have a look at it, state-of-the-art facility with illuminated pitches and everything at Doxy. Coopers Park, the home of Stafford Rugby Club, and I'm looking forward to going to Wembley, or not Wembley, to Twickenham when they start and move forwards. I haven't been to Wembley, I did go to Wembley, I saw Iron Maiden, but that was it. Thanks, guys.
There are two more speakers on this topic, so I'll take those two, then I'll revert to the leader. councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I wasn't necessarily going to speak, but I play and sport a minority sport that isn't with a funny shaped ball or anything. But what I do acknowledge, and I think this is what we've seen with the England team, it's about pride, and I think that Gareth Southgate has developed pride. I remember when I was a teenager, didn't last long because of playing hockey in one respect, because I wasn't quite good enough, but my goodness, was I not proud when I was selected to play for Staffordshire? It meant the world to me, and it was just regretful that I didn't become as good as I would have probably liked, but I still played, and it was important. And I think what we've got with the England team now is pride to play for the nation, and that, and not just England, I think really representing the UK. And that's what's important about it. Previously, it was club before nation. I really do believe that we've now seen nation before club when it actually comes to the football. You do see it in Rugby Union, it clearly is nation before club. You do see it, I think, in cricket, nation before club. And sadly, football has taken a bit of time to get it back, it used to be nation before club. Money rather influenced it, rather wrong direction, and I'm pleased to see that we are now seeing pride in our country. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Tom Loughborough.
I had to speak on this because racism is something that I myself experienced, and I wanted to say in regards to the English football team, they are the antipodes of everything that's not racist in this country. You have Marcus Rashford, who's campaigned constantly, you have Mason Mount, whose gestures to young fans were beautiful, you had Jack Grealish, who has defined this country. And I wanted to say that Staffordshire is a county, there's been a lot of talk about racism, this is not a racist county. And those young idiots who define and offend our young players should be ashamed of themselves, because what is best about Britain is the fact that you can be of any ethnicity, come here and make a life of yourself. And I think that English national football team is a message of that, and I hope that next year we go on better, because, I mean, Gareth Southgate's leadership was outstanding, but ideally would like to see us bring it home, as if, because what we saw was horrendous, and I'd like to see the positive end to this summer. Rather than focus on the negatives, we should talk about what those footballers achieved for this country, and how after the worst year many of us have ever seen, and particularly my generation's never seen anything like this, how we pulled together as a country in England, and I think we should be proud of those young lads.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. To councillor Huckfield's request, yes, I am indeed appalled by the racism that was floating around as a consequence of this. The individuals who perpetrated this racist abuse, I would describe as thugs, imbeciles, fools, who've achieved nothing, nothing. Contrast that with the character, fortitude, determination, and superhuman fitness of the young men who got us to the final. And despite the results, we just have to admire their character. You keep going, you get yourself up, you start again, and you do your best, and that is what's best about being British. We do our best, we get up, we stick with it. Those idiots who came up with the racist abuse, let's be ignored and from here on in, forgotten. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
I'm going to revert now to item six, councillor Huckfield, so you pass your comments you wish to make, but there will be no response to it at this stage? Okay, the leader says he would like to respond, okay?
He would, yeah. I thought he would, Mr Chairman, because everybody likes to respond to me, I don't know why. Right, if you look at item six, right, without going through all the lot and reading all the lot, right, I'm going to bring it up once again about the Wally's Quarry. Right, now, as far as I am concerned, this is a very, very important issue, right, within my area, right, within the whole of the borough of Newcastle, right, and we've got a serious problem. And I brought you up at the last full council about the problems we've got, and I don't want to go through all that again, right, because you're probably being like Boris Johnson, fed up or reading it, right, because that's what he's saying. And he's saying to the EA, right, sort it out. And the EA, they don't want to sort it out, because they don't know what to do, right? We've been completely fobbed off all the time, and nobody's fobbed off, probably, than myself. I've had meetings after meetings after meetings with these people. They keep changing the team, right, they change the team again, right? So the gentleman from down south, right, he's gone back down south. The one from Shrewsbury, he's gone back to Shrewsbury, right, and this is what's happening, right? They're all going back, and they keep splitting them up, so hoping they can come sit in my house with me and start afresh. Well, the starting afresh is finished. And I was sitting by this young lady by me, thank you very much for putting it, like having a secretary. Can I just, can I just say, Mr Chairman, right, that the people out there, right, turn around to me in the street and say, you know what the biggest problem is, Derek, and why you can't get things sorted? People don't care. This young lady, I'm going to refer to her, because the first thing I said to her, why did you become a councillor? The answer was, because I care, am I correct? So that's what it's all about, and we've got to be caring. And when we come to look, and we look in the press, and we look at this professor, he's saying that our children could, take notice could, end up with cancer. As well as all the other complaints and all the other illnesses, right, and people are going to doctors and specialists, and they're recommending that they move out of the area. Does the whole of the borough of Newcastle and Stoke-on-Trent move out of the complete area because of one company? Do we sit back and let this company rule the roost in the whole of Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent? I would say we don't, right? And I'm going to tell you, because people say to me, well, what do we do? Councillors in this county council have said to me, what do we do, Derek? I'll tell you what you can do. Every single person, and you talk to your technology, which Simon Tagg referred to, right? The technology, you've got it all in front of you, you've all got your iPads, you've all got your phones, right, and I'd like you to get in touch with the environmental agency and say to them, go and shut the site down, and then let's sort all the problems out, because that's what the people are asking for. That's what I'm asking for. That's what Newcastle Borough Council are asking for, right? Right, so that's the only way, united we stand, right? And if we all stand united as county councillors, and I'll take it further than that, Mr Chairman, I'll take it as far as Stoke-on-Trent Council, and every other council within the whole of Staffordshire, if all the councillors write to the EA and say, shut the site down, right, and let's sort it out, and that's the only way we're going to do anything about it, because at this moment in time, the EA haven't got the bottle to do it unless you push them into that position. And I'm asking you to push them into that position for the sake of all the residents of the borough of Newcastle, for all them young children, right? Because I was a member as an out and safety officer, right, that asbestos wasn't safe, was safe, should I say. Now they're saying it's unsafe. Your ceiling tiles, right, oh, they were wonderful, yeah, now they're saying they're a pyre hazard, right? So we can't go by them, sort of, we can only go as it stands at this moment in time, and at this moment in time, Mr Chairman, right, I'm asking you, take notice, right, and I'll find out whether you have or whether you haven't, right? Send the email and talent to shut it down. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman, for letting me speak, and can I just finish off?
No, I'm going to leave it there now. On advice, legal advice to me, you're going to get a response first from councillor Simon Tagg, the leader of Newcastle Council.
Because I was going to ask the leader about my first question.
No, you've had your five minutes, thank you.
As the relevant portfolio holder of the county council, which covers the environment, I think we've just heard all of the passion and the concern in Derek's voice also about it, really is a really serious issue. And we should talk about the EA, we know of their poor performance, and that's why we're trying to, as a local authority, you know, take action locally. The operator continues to allow toxic gas to spew from Wally's Quarry landfill. The EA is the regulator, let's say no more about them, Derek's covered that. And we see continued high numbers of complaints, we have readings from monitoring stations that are still above World Health Organisation nuisance levels, and we have PHE really concerned about the health risks as this goes on, the longer time this goes on. And this has been compounded in recent days by the heatwave weather, where we have residents that can't open their windows at night. I'm sure all of us in this room have had our, you know, the windows open at night to keep, you know, the heat down. Well, this is overnight is when the stink does permeate around the area, a wide area, so much so that this morning, a fellow councillor from the county here said that his relatives in Trenton, which is six, seven, eight miles away from the landfill, were woken in the night by the toxic smell which is coming from this quarry. So the council, Newcastle Borough Council, took a decision yesterday, it was ratified by the full council last night, to allot funding for our officers to launch an abatement notice process. Officers who make that decision, elected members don't, of course, that's an officer, a decision our environmental health officer has confirmed that she is going to do that abatement notice, and is in the process of writing up to make sure it is legally watertight. And I think that's something we can do locally, the county have been involved in that, health authorities are involved in that. Evidence has been given by the community, and I've seen the letter later from councillor Pedezi, and councillor Wilson is going to answer that, but I would say we're doing it for all of the community. That traveller site is in my division, and I can assure you that the council have been looking out for them, so have Spire Housing, who run that site, have been looking out for them, they are part of our community, they are suffering like the other residents that live around this site. So really, Derek, listening to you, we're all listening to you, we, all the Newcastle members have experienced this odour and this gas, and we're all doing all we can, and the council is doing all it can to progress that abatement notice which will hold the operator for the cause of this to account. So watch this space, action will be taken.
Thank you. Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report 2021. councillor Sutton, will you move the consideration of the report, please? I shall move that report.
Oh, that's it, thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to second councillor Sutton's report, but also to add my thanks to him and the officers and the panel for all the good work they do looking after our children. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor, Mrs Atkins.
Thank you, Chair. The corporate parenting panel plays an absolutely vital role, and I applaud all those people who sit on it. And I see that the report notes the important role of both district and borough councillors who are co-opted as champions of looked-after children in the areas, particularly of housing and leisure services. But my concern is that there is a low attendance from some members who've been co-opted, and I just wondered what the Chair was going to be doing to try to ensure that all district and boroughs that have invited co-optees have a full attendance. Obviously, sometimes people are not going to be able to attend, but I think it is such a vital role, that it's really important that that coordination between the county and the district and boroughs is kept as healthy as possible. Thank you.
councillor, Mrs Pedezi.
Thank you, Chair. It's welcome, Chair, that mental health support for our young people is being considered a priority. Could I ask, though, what's meant by... people is being considered a priority. Could I ask, though, what's meant by this support being given in a timely manner? How long does it actually take for a child to receive support for their mental health issues? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs. Gillhood.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell all the members that this is the most amazing committee to sit on. It's one that, when you go away, you know everything that you've said has been received in a positive manner and has been acted on. And at the next meeting, the results of the questions that we've asked will be brought back and we'll be told that, yes, we've actioned that. It's been a real transition. I've sat on the, on the group for a number of years. And as it says in the report, the language has changed. The children, we no longer refer to them as cases. They're now actually children, or are our young people. And it was them that said, we're not cases. So we did listen to them. We've also learned that when things break down in a home, and one, both, or either of the parents can't look after that child any longer, that the immediate family is involved, and they're given the opportunity, if suitable, to take that child into their home. I'm particularly proud that as a county, and I think we're one of the few counties, and I'm sure Mr. Sutton will tell you, we're one of the few counties who actually extend our care to the care leavers who are up to the age of 25, which is a remarkable achievement. Most of us on that group have had experiences of dealing with young people, and none more so than Mrs. Edgela, who often shares her personal experiences with us. And we can empathise with what she went through. But more importantly, she can share with us exactly her personal experience with her son, which has been invaluable to me. I'd, I'd like to take this opportunity as well to thank Mr. Sutton for being a remarkable chairman. His guidance has been extremely helpful to all of us. And as I say, if you do get the chance to sit on this committee, it's one of those that is positive, positive, positive. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And I'd just answer councillor Padase's question about mental health, actually, and being the mental health champion. Every child, there is all different categories of mental health with children. So it depends which route you go down to get them that help, you know. But the first port of call, actually, probably is the doctor. And then found out from there, where we go. But there's so much work going on. And I'm so pleased to hear that mental health is being put at top of the agenda along with physical health. And we've all got to fight for that, to make sure mental health is coming into, into being as meant as, as physical health. Thank you. And I'm quite happy to share my experiences if anybody wants to listen to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jonathan Price.
Thank you, Chairman. No, there's not a lot I want to say, just that I wanted to thank councillor Sutton and all the members on this panel. It's an extremely important piece of work. And we're very, very fortunate to have such good leadership on there from, from Mark. So thank you. One of the items that's listed in here as well is listening to the children's voice. Extremely important and something that is done on this panel. I'd also like to say that that's in our SEN strategy that we recently adopted along with our partners. And it's very clear that one of the main aims and objectives of this council and our strategy is listening to the children's voice, because their views are extremely important. Thank you.
Councillor Sutton, would you like to respond?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for dealing with the questions that have been raised initially. Question regarding mental health. Before the end of the, the last administration, I did share with all councillors, all, all members, the detailed document that is available on Staffordshire Connects, that has got all the pathways. I will ensure that's shared again with, with new, new members, so they can brief themselves on what support is available, both from the County Council and what we commission, as well as the different health, health, health providers. In relation to membership, we've worked particularly hard on the panel to ensure that there is good membership across the whole of the county and from districts. And in, in some, in some districts, there are many members, a couple of county members who are also twin, twin, twin hatters as well. And in other areas, membership has not been as good as it should have, should, should have been. But those individual issues are raised. And I've spoken to the leaders of individual districts and worked with the, worked with officers here to ensure that those people that are nominated are actually in a position to be able to attend, attend this meeting. So that is very, very much in, in hand. And a lot of work has been done on that. And it's, it's much, it's much improved. And the participation we get from district members and borough members, particularly around care leavers and accommodation, has been first class over the last four years. And I'd like to also thank Jill Hood for her very kind comments in relation to the, to the, to the, to the panel. But could I just generally ask members to put 10 minutes aside, particularly those that are not members of corporate parenting panel, to, to, to read this report? We have over 1,200 children in this county who are in our care. And although the panel carries out the responsibility on behalf of the council, every member and every employee in this County Council has a responsibility as corporate parents, and for the care of those young people. But that's not all. And as Anne Edgela mentioned, we also have responsibility for our care leavers until they are age, up to the age of 2025. And they're all allocated a personal adviser who they can contact. And many of our young people do that through social, social media, because that's the way they want to do it. So the corporate parenting panel has changed considerably over the last four years, with more emphasis on care leavers, listening closely to the voice of children in our care, and having workshops to decide on our visions and priorities. Looking forward, we will be talking even more with children and young people, and ensuring that their concerns are what we focus on, because that's what's important. If it's not good enough for our own children, then it's not good enough for the children that we have responsibility for as corporate parents. So can I take this opportunity to thank all members of the panel, past and present, for their hard work over the past four years? Particularly those members who are no, no longer on the panel following the recent elections, you know. And can I welcome all those new members to the panel? And I hope that they contribute in the same way as the members that they have replaced have. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
I move that the report be received. Is that agreed?
Aye.
Covid-19 Support and Recovery Fund 2021, report and next steps. Councillor Wilson, will you move the consideration of the report, please?
Thanks, Chairman. I move that.
Thank you. Councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Staffordshire, what a great place to live and work. More so when you see all the fantastic work done by all the volunteer groups throughout Staffordshire. Thank you to all of you. On page 48 of the agenda, references made to Hidden Warriors, a charity operated by people belonging to the Royal Navy. They are committed to helping in the community. Hidden Warriors, along with Aman's Incredible Eats, Silthmore Community Group, and with the help of the Children's Centre, have produced recipe cards on how to cook the produce provided, to help families in need. Just an example of the good work taking, taking place in Staffordshire. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Julie Jesel.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I too would like to add my sincere congratulations to all those people who, in a time of crisis, actually came out and helped their neighbours, their friends. It was incredible to see how communities opened up. And the support that we as a county council, and myself as a county councillor, were able to give them, actually, was only a small part. A lot of it was down to personal effort, personal commitment. And to see that change of attitude, people speaking to people who they only lived down the road, but they were able to help. And it was heartening. We hear so much bad news that I think we tend to forget about the good news and the good things that people do on that localised basis. And the Barton Neighbourhood volunteers, who started work originally with the local parish council, they arranged to take and deliver people's prescriptions. It's enabled them to keep going. And I'm sure that they will thrive. And I hope other local groups do continue. Covid may pass, but actually, the need of all of us to be involved and engaged with our local communities is more important than ever. So I would say thank you to those volunteers in Barton and Nidwood, but also a general thank you, not only for the support the County Council gives, but to all those hours of hard, dedicated work. That actually, as a volunteer, you're helping other people. But my goodness, it gives you a warm glow inside yourself. And that's really important.
Thank you. Councillor Mark Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The bottom of page 48, it talks about family, family action. And this is just one small, small thing that the councillors' funds have been, been used on. But it brought together a, a number of people, delivered really through our children's centres and family, and soon to be family, family hubs. And I know a number of councillors helped out particularly. But we were, we were able to, councillors provided over £1,800 from the fund towards this. And that was more than match, match fund by the County Council themselves and by others, in order, in order to be able to provide these, these, these packs and source over 23,000 items for young people across the whole of Staffordshire. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Johnny McMann.
Thank you, Chair. It was a great experience for us in, in Cannickchase, to see how a little money can go such a long way with the people of goodwill who really want to do something for their community. I want to pay tribute to Phil Hewitt, because in large part, he was, he was the councillor who drove this for us. And, and, and he, he did a great job in getting us all together and discussing how we would allocate the funds. It reminds me, just thinking of what councillor Jesel said, about, about this whole business is a virtuous circle, because it, it enhances the NHS Five Ways of Wellbeing. If you're a volunteer, it's good for you. If you're in receipt of a volunteer, then clearly you're being helped. And that virtuous circle is something we need to really work on and, and, and develop over the coming years. We contributed to MACE, which is a well-recognised Alzheimer's society. We contributed to fireworks, which deals with mental health for children, which is clearly important at the moment. But the one that we're most particularly proud of is the Salvation Army, because they deal with people who are under the radar. And to quote those at the Salvation Army, it's, they said, we get the people who you will not get anywhere else. And we managed to feed those good people during the pandemic. And we're particularly proud of that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Mike Wilcox, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Continuing in the same vein, I would also like to first of all thank the County Council for creating the Covid-19 Support and Recovery Fund, which has assisted many, many voluntary organisations throughout Staffordshire. And in particular, the work undertaken in Burntwood, where MHA Communities Burntwood were able to undertake training to allow such activities as online shopping, and to do the one-to-one contact through the befriending service, which ensured that those most vulnerable in our communities received a telephone call offering help and support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Colin Graitrix, please.
Chairman, most speakers have referred to the past and how well the previous scheme has gone. I'd like to talk about the future. I mean, I certainly support all of the comments that have been made. The previous year's schemes have been very useful, given the circumstances we've been in. And they've hit home and helped the organisations that we know have been able to help the public. But looking forwards, I think it's actually a breath of fresh air. We've got an issue where we need to get confidence back into our volunteer organisations. We need to get them back meeting, not necessarily on Zoom and Teams, but actually doing the things that they used to do before this pandemic started. So I know new normal is the, is the expression. It's difficult to define what new normal means. But we do have to use our scheme to encourage those organisations that we know are important to feel comfortable and confident to get on with, getting back to some form of new, new operation. So I will certainly be using that scheme. And I, I also thank councillor Wilson for putting this report together. And also Peter Barker, who I think has been very leading edge in terms of contacting members and saying, what's worked for you, what hasn't worked, how can we improve on this? So congratulations to both of those.
Thank you. Councillor Richard Cox.
Thank, thank you, Chairman. Page 47, we see that Lichfield helped the, the high-risk project. It's not just only them. I think we really need to absolutely congratulate everybody that raised their, to the game of, of trying to do for the community. Certainly in my village, I live in Armitage, we had a volunteering group with no hesitation, didn't need any parish council support or anything, if that ilk came up and organised and formed an organisation called Armitage with Handzaker Village Friends. I'm very proud to be a volunteer of that organisation. And the reason that I'm saying it is, when people were there in isolation, that was their, their need. And to take a prescription to their house and actually see a human being, their eyes lit, and in some cases, it was actually difficult to actually disengage from them, because they just wanted to talk. And that made you go away, knowing that you've achieved something for the community. So it is about everybody that really did come forward, and I congratulate them all throughout. Thank you.
Councillor Philip Hudson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd like to bring attention to everybody of the wonderful lifesaving work of the Shropshire, Staffordshire and Cheshire Blood Bikes. We have two teams in Staffordshire, the North Staffs and the East Staffs, covering all of our hospitals. I'm very proud to be a member of the East Staffs team. And we have a blood bike stationed in your toxic at our fire station. During the pandemic, the group were all volunteers, from the chairman, the supporters, the controllers and riders, have given so much of their time. I personally did 500 hours of volunteering last year, and I'm just one member. And so did many of my colleagues, did the same and more. But it was a great excuse to get out on a big motorcycle. And that kept our controllers very busy, because we have to get the calls on the various hospitals and track the riders to make sure that we're all safe. So as well as our day-to-day business of transporting blood, breast milk and other urgent samples to path labs, the riders delivered Covid samples to various path labs around the country, sometimes in relays with other groups. I did a run last year of 300 miles. It took me about six hours on, on the bike. And we did actually do one relay that ended up in the Shetland Isles. Now, I know that our bikes are powerful and can take off, but we didn't actually, we actually used a plane for the last bit. We also delivered urgent PPE. We distributed and collected heart monitors for Queen's Hospital in Burton. And we delivered donated iPads to care homes across Staffordshire, so that families could keep in touch with relatives. Derek said, well, you know, why do you do this? We do this because we care. And to see the faces on people that we go to houses to pick up samples, and we go to hospitals, when we went to the care homes, to see the smiles on their faces, brought it to me and what it's all about. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson, would you like to respond?
Thanks, Chairman. The role of Staffordshire County councillors in supporting our residents is essential. The role of Staffordshire county councillors in supporting our residents is essential and the member fund plays a key part. Every year we look at the appropriate focus for the fund and through last year Covid was of course the most challenging priority we and our communities had to deal with. Within a bigger picture of what the county council was doing across all our service areas and with all our partners to respond to the pandemic, the member fund was used as emergency support for organisations in the community. It was focused on supporting those new groups who stepped forward and for helping to meet the cost of existing groups who were suffering from lost income. Above all with the funding, we wanted to support two things, to protect vulnerable people in Staffordshire through the pandemic and ensure that our thriving voluntary community and social enterprise centre was still standing when this was all over. Staffordshire needs those organisations more than ever before. As time went on, it became very clear that further funding and a focus on Covid recovery could really add to this and so we found the money to give to each member an additional two thousand pounds to what they'd usually have for them to use on whatever their communities most needed. I'm extremely proud of Staffordshire's people for the way they stepped up and I'll never stop saying that. Often they hit the ground running to help those around them in a safe way and continued to adapt through the pandemic and explore how else they could help. I'm also very proud of the people in this room, our county councillors, for the way they use this funding to invest in driving that support, but also for the frontline role that many of us played in helping to set up and volunteer with the support in their area and members know their own area better than anybody else. This report on the use of last year's fund contains a comparatively small number of examples, as we've been talking about, compared to the overall number, but I hope it does give everyone a sense of the range and variety of what our communities did and we were able to help with that. With over two hundred different organisations supported last year across the county, the report tells a story of funding that was used right and genuinely made a huge difference. Twenty-twenty-one's community fund has been launched. I encourage members to let their community and voluntary groups know so that we can help to continue the amazing work that we do with councils, groups and individuals in this absolutely amazing county. Thank you, Chairman.
I move that the report be received. Is that agreed? Recommendations to the council. Members' allowance scheme independent remuneration panel report. councillor Alan White, will you move the consideration of the report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I move consideration of the members' allowance scheme independent remuneration panel report.
Do we have a second? Thank you, councillor Wilson. No speakers? Okay. It has been moved and seconded that the recommendation contained report be approved. Is that agreed? Independent remuneration panel appointment. councillor Alan White, will you move a consideration of the report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I move consideration of the independent remuneration panel appointment.
councillor Wilson? Again, there are no speakers. It's been moved and seconded that recommendations contained report be approved. Is that agreed? Changes to the constitution include review of changes as approved by annual council on the twentieth of May twenty-one, as reviewed by the Audit and Standards Committee on the thirteenth of July twenty-one. councillor Worvington, will you move the consideration of the report, please?
Report, Mr Chairman.
Could I have a second, please?
Happy to second that, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Again, we have no speakers. It has been moved and seconded that the recommendation contained report be approved. Is that again agreed? Report for chairman of the Staffordshire Police Fire and Crime Panel. councillor Peters, will you move the consideration of the report, please? Thank you. councillor Anne Edgley.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I welcome, like probably a lot of members in this room, Ben Adams as our police fire commissioner, along with Helen Fisher. They will bring a wealth of experience to the table. I've sat on the panel since it began, I believe, in twenty-twelve and one frustrating problem I find is people will complain on social media about judgements made by the commissioner but no one challenges him at public meetings which are held. I would say at the most, in all the times I've sat on the panel, we have had probably about ten people attend. This is a message to the commissioner and the deputy, more advertising when and where meetings are held. It will be good to hear more from councillors actually and from the members of the public. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Philip Hudson.
I'd like to express my congratulations to Ben Adams and Helen Fisher on being elected and appointed in their new roles. And I'd also like to welcome the new acting chief constable, Emma Barnett, in her temporary promotion. It's exciting times now for us. We have fresh faces and new ideas to make Staffordshire an even safer place to live and work. I spent some time with Ben in the run-up to the elections and had time to discuss the past and the future of Staffordshire Police. He has expressed that he wants to increase the number of police officers and the amount of time they spend on the beat. There has been an increase in the road policing team, which will help me in one of my priorities in Utoxite of road safety. And Ben also wants to look at rural policing in general, so I very much welcome all of this. Communication is very important and I do have concerns about the lack of communications between some elected members of all councils and their respective local policing units. And I will be speaking with Ben about this and how we can improve on this. I look forward to seeing a closer working relationship in the future with our police and together problem-solving the various issues when they arrive in our communities.
Thank you. I move that this report is received. Is that agreed? It is now five to one. I'm going to ask, would you prefer to continue through with the questions and then have lunch? I think that's a general view, that is what we will do then. Thank you. Okay, questions on the standing order eight. Members, the number of questions and answers have been circulated to members and published on our website. In accordance with the usual procedure, the question-answer will be taken as read. I will allow each question five minutes in which to ask a supplementary question and to receive an answer. No debate is allowed on the questions. councillor Pedezy to councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Could I ask, please, the first paragraph says that three virtual public engagement...
No, excuse me, there's no debate on the question. You can now ask a supplementary question, that is all.
Chair, can I ask, please, how many members of our Gypsy, Roma and traveller community living near that site have access to the internet? Thank you, Chair.
Come back on it.
I'm afraid I don't have the answer to that, I'm sorry.
But councillor, will you come back with a written reply at some stage in the future?
I don't know how I'm going to be able to find the answer out, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, councillor Pedezy to councillor Price. Do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, sorry, Chair. If the Covid education catch-up plan, Chair, is so credible and serious, then why did the Education Recovery Commissioner for England resign over this issue? And I'm suggesting that this plan shows utter contempt for this government and council who duped people into voting for it.
councillor Price.
I don't fully understand what you're asking, to be honest. From your comments, you're indicating that not only national government but us as an authority have not supported our children in education through Covid. And I won't use derogatory comments in this forum, but I have to say that that's utterly incorrect. If you want to put your question into more of a form statement, I am more than happy to meet with you independently and if there is a question there, I'm more than happy to write back to you, but I'm afraid I do not agree with any of your points. And you come here to make political gain and that's all that you're doing. At the end of the day, we work extremely hard in this authority, particularly around supporting our children and the work we've done, not just on the support that we've had from national government and the additional funding, but as a health as an authority, our children are absolutely paramount and the education they receive is absolutely key and is one of our main priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Price, and I support your comments. councillor Oates to councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, David Williams, for the answer you've provided. And it's such a positive answer, I'm pleased to see the promotion of inclusivity in all our services. Could I ask, will the cabinet member commit to ensuring that community groups such as the LBGTQ plus community in Tamworth who are organising the Pride event next month are able to achieve their celebrations and when they do impact on the highway network, that we can help and manage their aspirations and achieve what they want to in a simple, clear and safe way that doesn't feel like the authority is merely producing hurdles or hoops to jump through? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the question. I'd be happy to work with any group to ensure that they can carry out their work and their aspirations in the right and safe manner. I can assure everybody that whenever we do anything with highways, it's not just a tickbox exercise, it's to work with the aspirations of our community, that's our customers and that's who we support.
Thank you. councillor, Mrs Charlton Atkins to councillor David Williams.
I find this response somewhat disappointing because I think the county council has lost the golden opportunity...
Would you like to put that as a supplementary question then?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Chair. Trying to rush you through.
There is no rush, that's all right.
Fine, thank you. Sorry, I was saying that I think it's a lost opportunity to engage with local communities and to help them understand the initiatives to increase biodiversity. But instead what I'm getting is an overwhelming response of complaints, the fact that verges look untidy and that trees aren't being maintained. And I've obviously explained that it's really important that we allow flowers to bloom and we increase biodiversity and so on. But this response is very much, you know, referring me to the website. And yes, the website talks about cutting grass six times a year, but it doesn't say when and clearly when that cutting is done is vital. I mean, hopefully councillor Williams will work with councillor Tag on this because the other issue is, I asked him my question, whether the grass cuttings would be collected. And that wasn't responded to, but I can tell from the website that that doesn't happen. And it seems to me that if we are cutting the verges less often, then the money we're saving from doing that, we could then collect the cuttings so that we don't get the development of this thick...
Mrs Atkins, could you come to a question, please?
Of this thick hatch. So what I'm looking for is you working with councillor Tag to ensure that we get greater biodiversity and also working with local communities proactively, not just waiting for individuals to contact you, but working proactively to ensure that we do get better biodiversity and greater understanding from communities about what the objectives of the county council are. Referring me just to the website doesn't really help me in that, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Atkins, for your supplementary question. I can assure you that when it comes to verges and trees, we are being proactive in the fact that we are putting together a policy right at this moment to address this, but we have to remember that when we do put in trees and things that are close to highways, there is a financial cost and an ongoing cost, not only of them being sighted and being looked after, but then maintained and then having safety inspections on an annual basis, which is well over a million and a half pounds. Cutting the grass, when you were talking about it, actually the way that the cuttings are, those are the ways, most of the machines are actually there to mulch it into the grass itself and that is supposed to help it, but those are the contracts that were made and agreed some time ago. And obviously when it comes to working with councillor Tag, I'm already doing that by putting this policy together to ensure that we can proactively look at areas which are actually suitable for the growth of, as they call them, wildflower verges or the installation of maybe shrubs. However, like I say, I think when we're talking about trees, one, they aren't, they do take some time, not many of them last. And then actually when we're talking about it with the financial burdens on the council, I think there are other measures that we can put in place that would be much more suitable and that's what Simon and I are working on.
Thank you. Mrs Atkins again to councillor Williams.
Can I ask a supplementary? I've already allocated all my present and future DHP monies to this project, so it is fully funded. That's why I'm increasingly frustrated by the lack of any progress on this project and I'm appealing to the cabinet member to please secure a timetable for me so this project can get underway as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for the supplementary, councillor Atkins. Unfortunately, after speaking, my office has known it's not fully funded. The cost of this scheme is well over twenty thousand pounds, which is nowhere within your annual DHP, but I'd be happily to discuss this with you after the meeting and looking if we could actually get this installed for you, but the actual cost is well above what a normal member's DHP is.
Is I actually put forward my future year's DHP so that it would be fully funded?
For your information, that's not possible, sorry.
Thank you. councillor Afsa to councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Many thanks to the cabinet member for the reply. I've no supplementary question. However, as proposed, I will make arrangements to meet the cabinet member to do a site visit as suggested at a mutually convenient time and date.
Thank you. councillor Worvington to councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, David, for the reply. I have had a lot of residents very concerned about the misuse of electric scooters. I see they are registered to twelve miles an hour, but if one hits you at twelve miles an hour, it could come a bit sharp or damage people. Just one question really. In terms of Staffordshire county council's input into these, who actually enforces the measures? And we're aware that they haven't got number plates or registration, why aren't we doing that? Because of those two questions or those two points, is Staffordshire county council liable if someone does get hurt? Who is the accountable person on this or organisation? Thank you.
councillor Williams.
Thank you for the supplementary. Yes, the problem that we might have with the fact of these scooters, as people are saying, is that many of them out there are illegal ones and not just the ones that are going on in the trial. These are able to be bought quite freely, especially from Halfords. And actually whilst we were launching the scooter trial last year, an illegal scooter came straight through where we were doing the photo shoot. So these are things that are something that is out there. The government are looking at this as a white paper and this might be taken out of our hands, but at present with the trials that are going on, it is the responsibility of... hands, but at present, with the trials that are going on, it is the responsibility of the operators, should anybody misuse their scooters and anybody be injured, and that was part of the agreement when it came from government.
Thank you. councillor Sain has put two questions to councillor Wilson, but he's not present today, he's not entitled to a supplementary. Petitions. Does any member have a petition they wish to present? Okay, exclude the public, there is nothing to exclude the public for, so that ends our first meeting. Can I thank you all for your patience throughout the meeting, waiting to speak, et cetera. It's been great to be back, so thank you very much to everybody.